This meeting is called to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is May 17th, 2022, and the time is now 5:35 PM. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that to ensure that all voices are heard and protected, the rules of decorum will be enforced in accordance with our city's decorum ordinance and Florida statute 871.01. Disruptive behavior will receive a warning, and should disruptions persist, the sergeant-at-arms will be directed to take appropriate measures. If you are asked to leave, you will not be readmitted to the chambers. Order must be maintained at all times so the rights of all individuals are protected, and we, the commission, may conduct the business of the city. For this evening's meeting, Commissioner Turkin will be joining us virtually. Madam Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Mayor Ty Pennsorga.
Here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Angela Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Woodrow Hay.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Amy Kelly.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Reverend Randy Patterson of Seacrest Presbyterian Church, and immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Woodrow Hay. Let's all stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, our merciful Father, the 34th Psalm declares, "When the righteous cry for help, the Lord hears and delivers them out of all their troubles; and then you promise that the Lord is near to the brokenhearted and saves the crushed in spirit; and then you invite us to taste and see that the Lord is good." So tonight, as we begin this meeting, we turn our hearts to you. We cry for your help. We ask for your presence, your grace, your mercy, your blessings on our city, Boynton Beach. Hear our prayers, oh Lord, deliver us from our troubles. We ask for wisdom and guidance to be given to our leaders, particularly to the city commission as they meet. Grant them all of the knowledge, all of the information, and all of the wisdom they need as they seek to lead our community, and let them do it with unity, with insight, as they seek to lead our community, giving us a place of stability, security, and opportunity. We thank you for their hearts of service, and we ask that you would allow them to lead our city with joy. We thank you for each one who has come tonight. Lord, there is deep interest in so many aspects of what's going on here in Boynton Beach. For those who will speak, help them to be clear. For those who will listen, give them ears to hear. And may you bring solutions to the multitude of uncertainties that are before us. We thank you that we sit tonight in a city largely at peace, unlike those in the Ukraine, unlike those in our nearby nation of Haiti. You've given to us this large measure of peace and stability, and for this, we give you thanks. But we need your hand on our city. We continue to need your grace to heal and to help the divide that exists between ethnicities to be reduced and narrowed. Help us to love our neighbor. We have conflicts over plans, differing opinions about what is best. Give us insight in the way we should go. Give us spirits of humility and consideration for one another as decisions are made. We need your grace to bring healing to those who are living with issues of mental health, those who have restless hearts, that you would deliver those who are trapped in paranoia and fear, that you would give them faith that is accompanied by a divine peace. Reconcile the families of our community that are broken. Bring healing to wounded marriages, strength to weary parents, hope to those who are alone. Grant faith to our citizens that they might know your peace that passes all understanding. Fathers, we come out of the pandemic, we pray this is the case. We enter into a new crisis of an economy that is falling asunder. And the cost of living, the raise in rents, the difficulty for people to pay mortgages, even to put food on the table, Lord, cause us deep concern. We ask for your mercy. We pray, Lord, that you would provide jobs for the unemployed, that you would provide increase for the underemployed, and that inflation would be brought under control so that we may be able to meet our needs. You call upon us to open wide our hand to our brother, to the needy and to the poor in our land. And so we thank you for the churches and agencies and individuals who give so generously to those who are in need. Set us free from the desire to always amass and gather and give to us generous spirits. And now, Father, tonight, we commit this meeting to you and ask that you would refresh us with your presence and with your blessing. We come to you in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag, I mean, I'm a citizen of America.
To the republic which is named.
Nation, under God, indivisible, with nothing but justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, and thank you to all those here today. Moving on to agenda approval, are there any additions, deletions, and corrections from members of the commission? Commissioner Hay.
Mayor, I would like to add an item under three as K have a discussion on the internal affairs investigation for SJ. Just like to get a status report on where we are on that.
Commissioner, I believe that would is best put under new business, not under three. Three's for...
The rationale was to get that in before public audience.
Before public audience?
Before public audience.
Okay, and would this be more of an announcement type or a discussion?
No, not a discussion.
Just a status.
Status on where we are, where we're going.
And I would be open to that, so let's put that as K, status of the SJ investigation. Right. All right, any others from members of the commission?
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner, yes.
Yes, I believe we got an email about eight, the Shalimar, for that to be tabled.
Yes, we will keep that tabled per their request.
Okay.
Any other requests from members of the commission? I just want to add one item after announcements, very simply to acknowledge our city clerk. And hearing no other amendments, I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, although opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, the agenda is amended. Moving on to informational items and disclosures by members of the city commission. Let's begin with Commissioner Turkin.
I don't have anything, but I do want to thank staff for making it possible for me to join virtually today. I'm really upset not able to be there, but I don't want to get anyone sick. So thank you, staff, for making this possible. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioner Turkin. We appreciate your efforts. Let's go next to Commissioner Kelly.
I don't have any information. I did attend on Sunday the remembering and healing event at City Hall. Thank you, Commissioner Hay, for supporting that event and that group. I look forward to it growing in years to come. It was a good event.
Thank you for your attendance.
As for myself, on Saturday, I attended the Roots and Wings event. Roots and Wings is a local nonprofit. It was the Above and Beyond Teacher Celebration Evening, where we celebrated teachers who have gone, as the name goes, above and beyond your local schools. On Sunday, I attended the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee's Remembrance and Healing Event with my fellow commissioners. I want to thank not just staff, but also the organizers, Ms. Klein and Commissioner Hay. Thank you for the work you did in leading this event.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cruz.
No, nothing to report right now.
Can I get the mic?
No, nothing to report at this time.
All right, Commissioner Hay.
I have no disclosures, but I did work with Feeding South Florida on Thursday, where we again gave out food to nearly 800-plus families. I also, on Sunday, attended the remembering and healing process together. And I want to say that it was successful. I got a lot of feedback from families who talked about their healing process. As all of us know, that there are times when we lose our loved ones that, for whatever reason, and reason being the pandemic, that we did not have opportunity to have complete closure. And so this was an opportunity to come out and to let our citizens know that you're not in it alone. We're in this together, and we will get through this. So I want to thank those of you who came out prayerfully. There will be another one sometime down the road. And we would like to see more of you come out and just support one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. And before we proceed, just want to take a moment to acknowledge two dignitaries in the audience. I do see former Mayor Grant and former Commissioner Mac McCray in the audience. Welcome and thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to announcements, community and special events and presentations. The first announcement is that the Virtual Hurricane Preparedness Informational Session will be held on Thursday, May 19th, from 12 to 1:00 PM. City manager, will that be available on the city website?
Yes, it should be.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to the next announcement. The Memorial Day Veterans Ceremony will be on Sunday, May 29th, starting at 2:00 PM at the Boynton Beach Memorial Park Cemetery, located at 1611 South Seacrest Boulevard. Again, that is on Sunday, May 29th, at 2:00 PM at the Memorial Park Cemetery. Moving on to 3C, we have an announcement by our interim city manager, Mr. Jim Stables, recognizing the Boynton Beach City Library for being awarded the 2022 Florida Library Association Library of the Year. Mr. Stables, tell us about that.
Yes, I'm honored to be able to introduce the library director, Craig. You'll come on up. This is a pretty big deal, as Craig explained to me, to be recognized in the state for such an outstanding opportunity. And I'll go ahead and let Craig explain a little bit about what went into this process, where we were recognized.
Good evening, Craig Clark, library director, and thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak about this wonderful award we received. I just want to say we're just doing our jobs out there, but it's nice to know that our profession has recognized us in stating that our creativity, our innovative programming, our leadership, our service to our community is up to speed and up to par, and we're doing the right things. And I just want to take a moment to thank all the library staff. It's their award. Everyone deserves this at the library. I'd also like to recognize the friends of the Boynton Beach City Library. We couldn't do a lot of things we do without their fundraising and their support. And to the library advisory board and the city's continued support. So thank you very much, and thank you to all the staff.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Moving on to our first proclamation of the evening. It is for Water Reuse Week. I've asked Commissioner Hay to present this proclamation. Commissioner?
City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors. Although Florida's water supplies are finite, the state's population and need for water resources continues to increase. And whereas water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources and a key to the state's sustainable water future. Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objective in Chapter 373 and 403, Florida statutes. And whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity is more than 1.8 billion gallons per day, approximately 70% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. Florida has risen to be the nation's leader in water reuse, reusing nearly 820 million gallons of reclaimed water per day to conserve for freshwater supplies and recharge our freshwater resources. And whereas May, typically a dry month when water demands are high, is a good time to educate residents about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources through water reuse. And whereas Water Reuse Florida, the state section of the Water Reuse Association, has proclaimed the week of May, 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Florida Water Reuse Week. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach has joined with Florida Reuse Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and South Water Management District is encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. Whereas the city of Boynton has implemented a water reuse program and encourages the efficiency and effective use of reclaimed water. And now I, Commissioner Woodrow Hay, on behalf of this entire city commission council, do hereby proclaim that the month of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Water Reuse Week.
Do we have Sheri McCorkle in the audience from South Florida Water Management District? I was told that she will be accepting it.
She was unavailable. Andrew Mack will be receiving on her behalf.
All right, thank you. We'll go to get.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager, Public Services. It's a pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of the regional wastewater plant and all of our utility workers, and promoting reuse in the city and in the state, and what a great product it is and to help save the environment. I really appreciate the proclamation, and they will definitely will make sure that we continue to put out the good water for you guys. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next proclamation. Proclaim May 18th, 2022 as Haitian Flag Day, and proclaim the month of May 2022 as Haitian Heritage Month. Samuel Pierre, the Palm Beach Haitian Heroes Incorporated, will accept the proclamation. I'll read the proclamation first. Whereas the growth and prosperity of the city of Boynton Beach is due in part to an ethnic diversity that includes a substantial and increasing Haitian population. And whereas we recognize the valuable contribution of the Haitian people in the fight for the independence, especially in the Battle of Savannah, and pay tribute to their endowment. And whereas the Haitian population in South Florida joins together during the month of May to commemorate their flag day and celebrate their historical and cultural indemnity. And whereas Haitian President Dumarees Esteem started the flag day celebration with parades, cultural and athletic events in many cities in Haiti in the 1930s, when he was a minister of education under President Stenio Vincent. Esteem wanted to commemorate annually the creation of the Haitian flag to encourage the development of patriotic sentiments amongst Haitian youths. And whereas it is appropriate to promote awareness and understanding of cultural diversity in our society in order to strengthen the self-esteem of our community. Now therefore, I, Ty Pennsorga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2022, as Haitian Flag Day and the month of May as Haitian Heritage Month. Is Mr. Pierre here? Come on up.
Thank you, City of Boynton Beach, for this proclamation. Thank you to the commission, especially Mayor Ty. Haitian Flag Day is a big thing, is a big thing back in Haiti. We celebrate with a lot of parades on the street. We do a lot, so it's very significant to have the flag being raised on foreign land. Tomorrow, I know the city will raise our flag. This is a great thing for us, and we thank you, United States of America. We thank Florida, and we thank the city of Boynton Beach. My son was born here, but I just wanted him to feel what it looks like to be Haitian, so that's why I brought him here from back middle. Thank you, the city of Boynton Beach.
Thank you, Mayor Ty. I was very pleased when you said to me, "I will consider, and I have planned for May 18 celebration." And then I cannot tell you how happy I am for the day that has come. And then your staff was wonderful. They work with us, and then I'm very pleased with you. And then you will listen to, I want to introduce Angel. She will recite a poem.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for this great opportunity, for what you're doing for the Haitian community. I'm an educator and also a local singer. And I thank Gina and Mr. Pierre for this opportunity. So yes, I am gonna recite a poem for you, for this occasion that I wrote. All right. Haiti, symbol of freedom. Once a kingdom, thank you for teaching many about the value of liberty. Thank you for being a model of bravery and setting your people and many others free. We proudly honor you today. In your name, we joyfully shout, "Hooray!" We salute our ancestors, who were once on earth of protectors. May they tirelessly help to wake us up, to never give up, to value union and rebuke division. May our Creator take control of you as we continue to fight for your well-deserved breakthrough. Haiti, symbol of freedom. May your day finally come to shine your light in the middle of each night. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. That was our first poem. Moving on to the next proclamation. For the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizens, Nakahama Manjiro, to the United States on May 7th, 1843, but also the anniversary of the May 10th, 1869 completion of the first transcontinental railroad, built with the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas we celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our history, society, and culture, we must also acknowledge a darker aspect of the AAPI experience in America: discrimination, prejudice, and injustice that most recently manifested itself in racist attacks on Asian Americans related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the Asian American Pacific Islanders have distinguished themselves as leading researchers in science, medicine, and technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, distinguished lawyers, judges, and government leaders in arts, literature, and sports, as war heroes who defended our country from fascism and peacetime healthcare heroes currently in the front lines of the pandemic. And whereas today, more than 20 million Asian American Pacific Islanders live in the United States and through their actions make America a more vibrant, prosperous, and secure nation. Now therefore, I, Ty Pennsorga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2022, as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. I would like to ask Taquita King-Pam from the Women's Foundation to accept this proclamation.
Good evening. Thank you so much for recognizing Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month as one of the few Asian Americans that has grown up and lived here in Palm Beach County. It is so impactful to be recognized. And this is not the first time the city of Boynton Beach has recognized May as APAI Month. This is the second year in a row. And so I want to make a special thanks to Boynton Beach, but especially to one of the few Asian American elected leaders that we have here in Florida. And so thank you so much, Mayor Pennsorga. We truly appreciate you recognizing the month, but we also appreciate you stepping up, running for office, and serving as an Asian American leader. And I appreciate Christina Vettadotto for joining me this evening as well with the Women's Foundation. This is something really important. We want to make sure that our community here in Florida recognize that Asians do exist, we are here, and we are contributing daily to society. So thank you very much, and I hope you all have a great rest of your month.
Thank you. Moving on to our next proclamation, which is for June 3rd, Friday, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Winnie Dunmire of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America will accept the proclamation. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Cities across the nation, including the city of Boynton Beach, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the amendment rights of law-abiding citizens go hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls for suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to her and other victims of gun violence. And whereas Hadiya was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange on June 3rd, 2022... Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Type and Surga, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim the 3rd day of June 2022 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I'd like to ask Ms. Dunmire. I see other friends here as well.
Thank you. My name is Winnie Dunmire. We're here to thank the City of Boynton Beach for the proclamation. Every year that we've asked for it, we've gotten it, and it's been four years. Moms Demand Action is a grassroots organization of people all across the nation in every single state trying to end gun violence, wherever it is. I joined Moms Demand Action a few days after Parkland, four years ago. And when I joined, that statistic was 92 a day, 92 Americans a day. Now it's up to 110 Americans a day. And that feels sad and like I'm not doing any, any good, but it doesn't matter. We just keep going with Moms Demand Action. So we wear orange, like the proclamation said, because it's a, it's a bright color. It was Hadiya Pendleton's favorite color, and it also, again, identifies hunters to each other. And we celebrate Wear Orange during her birthday. So National Gun Violence Awareness Day on the 3rd, and then that whole weekend will be having events and activities throughout the county to celebrate Wear Orange, where we will uplift the voices of our survivors because we're turning into a nation of gun violence survivors. There's probably a lot of people in this, in this audience that can raise their hand because they know someone that's died from gun violence or suicide. And it doesn't stop. It just never stops. There are things that we can do, non-legislative levers that we can push on a local level to end gun violence. There's a wonderful research-based website called CityGrip that you can input details about the city, and it will help you. It will spit out exactly what the city could maybe work on to, to make this change. So Moms Demand Action is here to offer any support, any research, any, anything that you might need. We're under the, we are, we're all volunteers. We're all local. We're all mothers. But we're not just, it's not just moms. Moms Demand Action is just people, here people trying to end gun violence. I am not a survivor, but this woman is. And I'm here speaking today in honor of her nephew, Matthew Murphy Jr., that was killed here in Boynton Beach on Christmas Day in 2020, and a very good friend of mine that was also shot on that day. These are the people we're gonna remember, and these are the people we're gonna uplift. And their voices are the most important. So I'd like to give Cassandra a minute or two, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
I grew up here. I've seen a lot of gun violence over the years. Not just my nephew, but a classmate of mine, Timmy Clemmons, who got killed, as we call it, Cherry Hill, many moons ago. And it was devastating. Today marks four years that my cousin, he came home from college, went to his friend's house, and it was a home invasion and got killed. So not only that, I'm a survivor. And I always say when I'm speaking that domestic and gun violence, they work hand-in-hand. They go hand-in-hand. And in my case, it was because I was trying to leave an abusive relationship. And I don't really come back to Boynton like I should because it reminds me of too much death. And I don't, I still communicate. I come in fellowship with different churches. Matter of fact, my uncle is in the crowd. Everybody here should know him by now. Bernard, right? But it's, it's very difficult for me. So that's why I still advocate, not just as a mom, but I also work with Mothers Against Murderers. And we do a lot. We try to go to every city, all 39 cities in Palm Beach County. And I just want to say thank you to all of you that gave us this proclamation because it means so much. And to keep like little kids and adults. And if you don't know about Be Smart, it's another good thing to get into because they give you gun locks, they give you information. And I thank Winnie so much because she has been very encouraging to me to tell my story and to continue to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next proclamation. Proclaim May 21 through 27, 2022 as National Safe Boating Week. Flotilla Commander Sherry Foreman will accept the proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Kelly to present this proclamation. Commissioner?
City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important life-saving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. And whereas on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lost their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard statistics show that drowning was the reported cause of death in four out of every five recreational boating fatalities in 2020, and that 86% of those who drowned were not wearing life jackets. And whereas Florida has been the leader of total number of accidents from 2016 to, to, through 2020. Now therefore, I, Amy Kelly, on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby support the goals of Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 21 through 27, 2022 as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. I urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating.
Who will be accepting it?
It is Erwin Fried from U.S. Coast Guard.
For the City Commission, my name is Erwin Fried. I am the flotilla staff officer for Public Affairs in Boynton Beach, and I wish to thank the city for its continued support. We have been blessed with a number of delightful boating days and a very large coastline. And because of that, we have some extra challenges. So the continuous support of everybody in the city and recognizing the citizens that boat here, you're taking the extra efforts to ensure their safety. And together, working together, I believe we can actually make a dent, although we do have twice the coastline as our next closest state. So it's a challenge, but with the support of the city, we are accepting that challenge. Thank you kindly.
Thank you so much. It's up to you. Our next proclamations was requested by Commissioner Cruz to recognize the 10th Annual Hispanic-Latino Studies Summer Institute and the Florida Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents State Conference. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas in 2012, the Florida Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, Florida ALS, was founded and originally known as the South Florida ALS Group by a group of Hispanic-Latino educational leaders in Miami, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties. And whereas the Florida Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents saw the need to provide a way for Hispanic-Latino educators to collaborate and advocate on behalf of Hispanic-Latino educators, students, and families. And whereas ALS is, not only serves as an acronym for the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, but was intentionally selected as a word in the Spanish language that means "wings", generating wings to success for Hispanic-Latino educators and students to reach their dreams. And whereas the guiding principle of Florida ALS is "we lead", which represents their organizational tenet to launch, empower, advocate, and deliver educational excellence. And whereas Florida ALS will help provide leadership that assures every school across the state of Florida effectively serves the educational needs of all students with a particular emphasis on Hispanic-Latino youth. And whereas Florida ALS will help build capacity and pathways for leadership, promote best practices, advocate for sound educational policies, and transform educational institutions. Florida ALS will support the Florida Mandate 1003.42P, the required instruction for students to learn about the study of Hispanic contributions to the United States. Now therefore, I, Angela Cruz, Vice Mayor of Boynton Beach, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim that the Florida Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents are honored for all their achievements and contributions in advancing equity and equal access to education to all students with a particular emphasis on Hispanic-Latino youth, and will celebrate this accomplishment at their 10th Annual Florida ALS State Conference.
Is it?
It's two different ones.
It's substantially different?
Some one. There's another proclamation. The City of Boynton Beach proclaims, whereas in 1998, the state of Florida legislature enacted the required instruction for students to learn about the study of Hispanic contributions to the United States. And the Office of African-African-American-Latino Holocaust and Gender Studies in the school district of Palm Beach County
will host this 10th Annual Hispanic-Latino Studies Summer Institute. And whereas the goal of the annual summer institute is to provide professional development to help increase cultural competence among district, district personnel and assist in the development of effective and relevant instruction. And whereas the institute will help to develop an equitable learning experience for Hispanic-Latino students in the district of, school district of Palm Beach County, which will help to increase their academic achievement. And whereas the institute will help to ensure that there is a shared commitment and collective responsibility for the academic success of Hispanic-Latino students. And whereas the institute will provide multiple historical and cultural accounts to help enhance understanding of Hispanic-Latino history, ethnicity, culture, identity, and language. The institute will celebrate the culture, contributions, and educational achievements of Hispanic-Latino students. In addition, the institute will help to promote positive, supportive, welcoming, and inclusive school climates for Hispanic-Latino students. Now therefore, I, Angela Cruz, Vice Mayor, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim that the school district of Palm Beach County is honored for their achievements in infusing Hispanic contributions to the United States within their curriculum and instruction. And will celebrate this accomplishment at their 10th Annual Hispanic-Latino Students' Summer Institute. Thank you. Now we'll have a resident from District 1 accept the proclamation.
City Commission, good evening. I feel extremely honored to have been selected to accept this proclamation. My name is Johann Tokre. I'm an Army veteran, Hispanic. And I think it's extremely important to recognize an organization such as ALS to be or to advocate for, especially in education. Education is extremely important. I'm a neuroscience major. In the, in 2019, I was deployed to the Middle East, and my knowledge in neuroscience or experience with it allowed me to design, develop, and execute an efficient mental health program overseas in the Middle East, which is now the standard for all service members to attend with the goal of minimizing reactions to combat and operational stressors. As you can see, education is extremely important. It's also important to recognize the contributions that we, Hispanics or Latinos, contribute to the United States. My case to the military. And I plan on bringing that same program to the City of Boynton Beach.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. That brings us to the conclusion of all of our proclamations. We're moving on to item 3J. The city's external auditing firm, Markham LLP, has completed the city's comprehensive annual financial report, compliance reports, and management letter for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2021.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Mara Frederiksen, Director of Financial Services. I have Moar Riza, Scott Montgomery, our external auditors from our Markham, and our Deputy Finance Director, Corinne Elliott, tonight to present our 2021 financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Autumn O'Mayor, City Commission, and City Management. My name is Moar Reason. I'm with the firm of Markham LLP. And for the record, we're located at 525 Okishobi Boulevard, Suite 750 in West Palm Beach. I'm here today to present the annual financial comprehensive report that you have received as part of the agenda package. And if you're following along, it is, it is a lengthy document, but I'm going to go over certain sections. The first section in the financial section is the Independent Auditor's Report. And this is one of the few documents within the, the comprehensive annual financial report, given the fact that the document itself is put together by your finance department. The first paragraph makes reference to what we've audited, and we've audited the fiscal year end, September 30, 2021. The second paragraph titled "Management Responsibility" makes reference to what is management responsible for. And they're responsible for putting this document together and data here to the United States and accepted accounting principles. The third paragraph titled "Auditor's Responsibility" makes reference to what we, Markham, as the external auditor, is responsible for. And we're responsible to provide an opinion in, in regards to the financial statements in accordance with auditing standards and government auditing standards. And on page 2 of the document is the opinions paragraph, and this is the most important paragraph in the auditor's report. And it makes reference to, based on our financial audit, we, we give the opinion that the financial statements referred to present fairly in all mature respects the financial position of the city as of September 30, 2021. And that in essence is a keen opinion. It's an unmodified opinion. It's the only opinion you, as an elected body, want to be associated with. In regard to what we did, which was a financial audit, it's the highest regard that one could receive. So congratulate. So congratulations to city management, the elected officials, and the finance department for receiving a clean opinion in 2021 with no items to report. The second document that was released on April 15th is our communication letter. And although I'm here presenting this document to you in May, this document has been released for over a month now, so you had time to digest it. This, this reference and communication letter summarizes how the audit went and some of the new audit accounting standards. Just one that I wanted to highlight was that there was a new accounting standard, GASB 98, which provides new terminology to, for accountants to use. In the past, this, this document was referred to as a comprehensive annual financial report, and it had a separate acronym that is no longer used or acceptable. It's now called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and the new acronym is ACFR. So that's the new terminology that should be used when being referenced or posted on your city's website. And this letter also makes reference to any disagreements that we have with management regarding the recording of a transaction or reporting or disclosing a transaction. Pleased to mention that we had no disagreements in how a transaction was recorded or disclosed in the financial statements. We also take the opportunity in this letter to make reference if we had any difficulties when performing the audit. Um, and it, uh, that was not the case. I want to thank Mira and Corinne and all their entire finance staff for assisting us throughout the process. The audit is a large undertaking, and they were, they made themselves available throughout the entire process in order to ensure that we submitted and finalized the audit in a timely manner. So I want to thank them, given the fact that there was a change in the new audit team this year. It did require a lot of their time and attention to provide us documents for us to populate our audit binders. So I want to thank them for not missing a beat and for allowing us the opportunity to finish it on a timely manner. Again, um, you have the entire document attached to today's agenda. If any questions arise after today's meeting, we make ourselves available. But I'll open it up now to if you have any questions.
Any questions from city manager or members of the commission? Right, hearing none for now. Thank you so much, Markham and our finance department. Thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a update on the investigation of Stanley Dale Davis III.
Yes.
Commissioner, hey, you requested for this item. Would you like to say a few words first?
Yes, Mayor. I, I requested this item to be added in order to move ahead with the SJ case. I hadn't heard anything in a while, and I just want to get an update to make sure that we don't get, allow us to get swept under the rug, which I'm sure we won't. But I just need to hear an update so that we can bring some resolution to our citizens of this great city. So with that, Vanessa.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. My name is Vanessa Snow, interim police chief. And as requested, I will be providing to you a very high level overview of the investigation that you've requested. I will tell you that the investigation remains ongoing. Witnesses are continuing to be interviewed. And at this point, that is the information that I'm able to provide.
Okay. Do you have a timeline or anticipated when things might be coming close?
I can tell you that we have statutorily 180 days from the initiation of the investigation. So we are within that 180 days at this time, and we intend to conclude it beyond, before the conclusion of that timeline.
But that would put you somewhere around September. So we can safely say that by September or before September.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
That's the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next item on the agenda, requested if we could just take a moment to acknowledge our city clerk, Ms. Crystal Gibson. Ms. Gibson, from my understanding, this will be the last time you'll be with us for our city commission. I was informed that you have decided to, to move on, and I just want to take the moment to say thank you for the work you have done. In my experience with you, you have been nothing but professional. You have been nothing but fair and straightforward and by the book. That's exactly what we need in a public servant. So Ms. Gibson, I want to give you a round of applause and say thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the city. You are exemplary. We wish you nothing but the best. Ms. Gibson, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone for that acknowledgement. You're very gracious. It has been a pleasure to serve the city. I, it is bittersweet because this is a, a good place to serve the public. I've enjoyed it very much. I've enjoyed working with the city and, and great team that we have here. I am going to just change careers and be a homemaker, also known as administrator of family and home affairs. My wonderful husband and my two toddlers. And so just entering a different phase and, and time in life, but look forward to never leaving, of course, the area and perhaps coming back to public service one day after they're all good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, fellow commissioners, if you'd like to say any few words?
Ms. Gibson, um, you know what I think? You know, I think you're phenomenal. I really appreciate you. Very sad to see you go, but I understand. And we just want to thank you and give you an air hug from here. Thank you for your service in Boynton Beach. You have been phenomenal, and we appreciate you.
I also echo those comments. You're very knowledgeable about city affairs. Every time I call you or came to visit and ask you a question, you had the, the answer for me. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that because certainly none of us up here know everything about the city. It's good to have someone like yourself who can pull those Florida statues just like that and let us know whether we are on the right track or not. So I certainly know that you will be successful in whatever you do, especially the route you're going now. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody.
Mayor, can I say it?
Absolutely.
I apologize. Katherine Matos, Assistant City Manager. I just want to thank you, Crystal. It has been an honor and a joy to work with you and to get to know you as a human being and as an employee. And we are really, really going to miss you. Your ex, your dedication to the service has been excellent. The quality of the services that you provide, and you set the tone. You're, the incoming city clerk has big shoes to fill. But we're really going to miss you, but I'm looking forward to maintaining a close friendship with you as you move on to the next phase of your life. And I'm happy you're making the right decision for yourself. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Before we begin, public audience, this is a reminder that individual speakers are limited to three minutes per meeting. The public audience period is not a Q and A. Staff and members of the city commission will take notes of the items presented during this time, and we will respond to them after this meeting has concluded. For those joining us virtually and wish to speak, please keep your digital hands raised throughout the duration of in-person public comments. After the in-person public comments have concluded, we will no longer accept virtual participants. I will also inform the virtual speakers when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock. We'll proceed first with those in person. Please form a line behind the podium on both sides of the chambers. We will alternate between both sides, and don't forget to begin by stating your name and address for the record. One second. All right, gentlemen, we have to proceed. Thank you. When you are ready, Ms. Rubenstein, please begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Barbara Rubenstein, and I'm the musical director of the Boynton Beach Gold Coast Band. With me today is Pat Trusella, the president of our Board of Directors. This is really more of an announcement. We want to thank you for having us here today to announce our upcoming free concert this Friday, May 20th, at 7:00 PM at the Centennial Park and Amphitheater. We were here just a few months ago to receive the proclamation from the city in recognition of our 45th anniversary season. It is only appropriate that the Gold Coast Band, which was founded by Dr. James Buffin, presented its first concert in the spring of 1977 outside in a park. And here we are. We will be concluding this milestone anniversary season with an outdoor concert. We are thrilled to continue the founder's vision of inspiring musicians and entertaining audiences, and we are grateful to the Recreation and Parks Department under the leadership of Casey Young, as well as Mayor Ty Pensiga and the City of Boynton Beach for sponsoring this event and giving us the opportunity to perform in the new amphitheater. We are presenting this concert as a gift to the community in appreciation for its continued support. The theme of the concert is "Music Making America", and will feature popular and patriotic favorites that everyone will recognize and love. There will be music by George Gershwin, Irving Berlin, the award-winning John Williams, music of the Big Band era, Disney classics, and of course marches by John Philip Sousa. We will also be featuring Mira Pensiga as a narrator on one of the songs, and we are thrilled about that. So bring your blankets, bring your lawn chairs, maybe a picnic dinner, and come out and enjoy a wonderful evening in music by the Boynton Beach Gold Coast Band. Thank you.
Begin when you are ready.
Hi, good evening. Steve Mackey, 501 Northwest 7th Street, Delray. My two young sons go to St. Joseph's Episcopal School here in East Boynton. The school has been there for 65 years. They've coexisted on the property there with the church for those 65 years in peace and harmony. Three weeks ago, they sent our school, the church sent our school a letter of least non-renewal. So tonight, what we have here are all the parents and some teachers that want to share their stories and how and why that school is incredibly important to ourselves and to our community. Our, this church hasn't given us any reasons for why they're doing this. So immediately, you know, our biggest fear is that the church is thrown, is going to throw the school out and then possibly bring in a developer to do some sort of an easy redevelopment project there and put million-dollar houses and just, you know, ruin the entire school, kill the school, and put our, you know, families out there looking for new schools. So we are here. You guys are the leaders of this city. It's important for you guys to understand how critical this school is to the community, the history of the school. We feel it's important that you guys hear those stories. Additionally, if there ever is some opportunistic developer that wants to come through the city and take advantage of this situation, they do have to come through your board. They have to request a change of use from a school slash church into whatever they choose could be a better thing there. So they will have to come through you guys. That use is a part of your future land use, is a part of your comprehensive use plan. So we just asked that you guys support us. It's a wonderful community, and you're going to hear some stories tonight.
How you doing today? My name is James Young, and I'm, I'm here. I'm from Boynton Beach. I'm a Boynton Beach citizen. I've been a Boynton Beach citizen for 36 years now. My problem is my, uh, do I have any rights in this city? Do I have any, um, because I'm a black man, do I have any rights, I'm talking like civil rights? That's what I mean. Do I have any? Because I go to the ER to report a accident that I was in. I went last night. And they failed to give me exactly what I told them what happened. I told them that my neck, my back, my shoulder is in pain. My lower back is in pain. When I walk, I'm in pain. I told them all this. They failed to give me the proper information. I go to, I left there. I went to JFK. They waited forever to submit me in. I went home. I got tired. I went home. I went to sleep. I woke up today on the same agenda. So I go to my primary doctor. He's a black doctor, Haitian descent. And I go to them, and the lady in the blue comes in the doctor room while I'm in there and tell me I need to get out of here. I need to go in the front, and I can't get what I'm telling him. He's writing it, but she's saying I can't be in there when he's writing. And they're not going to give it to me? What rights does I have to be? I'm a black American. My dad fought in the Vietnam War. My dad is an ex-veteran. He's a disabled veteran. He has his house from the VA. It's from Boynton Beach, Florida. He's 76 years old. I'm his son. He's Claude William Young. I'm James Young. What is the problem here? What is going on? Can I get some help? I was in a hit-and-run accident. I have a tag number. I have a VIN number, Florida. I have a Florida registration. I have a, um, everything's Florida. Everything. Tag number, VIN number, uh, Florida registration, Florida address, Boca Raton. What's going on? I can't get the person that was driving that vehicle so I can press charges on this person? If that was me, I would have been arrested, prosecuted. They would have found me because my tag number goes back to me. It got registered in the DMV. What is going on? Can you guys help me? I called the news. I called the governor. Everybody knows what's going on. Everybody knows about this. What happened? I can't. Everyone knows.
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next speaker.
Can I get some help?
Les, we're going to have staff connect with you so we can get you some information. Next speaker, please approach the podium and begin when you are ready.
Yes, hello. My name is John. I'm a father of a boy that goes to St. Joseph's Episcopal School. When I speak and say "they" in this instance, "they" is the Episcopal Church management. And we're here as parents to say the things that they should be saying, to explain the things they should be explaining, and to do the things that they should be doing, which is protecting kids. It's ridiculous that we're even here to do the things that the church should be doing in opposition and in a fight with the church over children's well-being. It's just crazy. To be summarily just dismissed and told you may not have a school in four months with two weeks left in a school year. If you all, I'm sure, are aware that with the influx of people over the last couple of years on the heels of a pandemic, there is no school options. I'm lying to my son daily now when he asks what's going to happen next year. I don't know what's going to happen next year, but I'm hoping that we can at least get the support of the city commissioners, the mayor, to help protect one of your crown jewels. 65-plus years, a center of excellence and learning for children. And I think, and it just seems crazy to me, your neighboring city has belabored for years over a burger joint, Doc's Soft Serve. I see for years that the developer wants to redevelop it, and they're putting forth projects, and the city says not, not good enough. A new location, and they're so worried is that it's hollowed ground, burial ground or something for a burger joint. I hope that you guys can collectively get behind your crown jewel, which is that beautiful school that's been there since 1958. And help us send a message that you can't just walk over and summarily dismiss us as if we're a hot dog stand that can move right down the block. Thank you.
Hello, Cortland McQuire, 506 Whispering Pines, District 3. I'm here to speak on behalf of the parents and families at St. Joseph's School in my district. I also just want to bring up something quickly before I get into that. As to the city commission and manager considering the sheriff's office to take over the police duties for the city. As a third-largest city in the county, I believe that that decision should be brought to a referendum and let the community vote on that. I don't believe that that should be put in the hands of the I don't believe that that should be put in the hands of the commission and city manager, bring it to the people. Also, I wanna talk about St. Joseph's School. I live in the district almost adjacent to the property. I have three nephews and nieces that attend the school. It is a beautiful school. As he said, it's been around forever. As a member of Planning and Development and Arts Advisory Board for the city, I did have communications with city planners about this issue. I wanna just shed some light, perhaps discovery for members of the commission. Hopefully you'll find this helpful. He was able to speak with me based on the fact that no one has come forward to the city as per rezoning or inquiries as to what they can do with the property, if sold or whatnot. So therefore, I don't believe anything is happening at city level as of Thursday of last week. So it is open to discuss this with the city planners. So not only the commission you should speak with, we all need to really encourage, as I did, the city planners, because as I understand it, this is not open to the public, this process. This is behind closed doors. The decision that they make is supported by a Supreme Court ruling. And I did ask about history based on this, and it doesn't appear that they typically go against the spirit of a law. It is zoned residential. In residential zoning, you're allowed education in school as long as it pours out onto a thoroughfare like Seacrest. So it is a church and school. The land was sold and contracted as such. I believe the spirit of that usage of that land should remain in perpetuity. I encourage the city commissioners to inquire with the city planners, to encourage them to remain. And the most important thing that a commission and city can do is transparency. These people don't have answers, they don't know what, we do not know what the plan is. We don't know what the pathway is. And I think just communication and transparency is key, and I want that school to remain. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg Murray, 916 Southwest 37th Court, Boynton Beach, proud to say. Vice Mayor Cruz and Mayor Ty, thank you very much for being such open listeners to us, as you have been. As I see tonight, you've got a lot of issues. And so you're giving us our due time. And maybe we don't deserve it, but you're making us feel like we do. So thank you very much for that. I, I'm not a big proponent of asking for things, but we all feel relatively helpless right now. My issue is also with the St. Joseph's School. I have two little boys who have grown up there and have become good human beings as a result of the teachings of the school and the wonderful people who surround them on a daily basis, the faculty, the staff, and the church. The, the church has lost money over the last few years. And it's pretty evident that we are, we are a harmonious unit. We're stronger together, the church and the school. One should not dispose the other. And the reason I brought up the loss of funds is because it's evidence pointing in the direction of a land deal that hasn't reached your level yet. My plea with you is, I think you will eventually have a decision to make on this. It may be 18 months from now, it may be two years from now. But when it hits your desk and you are able to render a ruling or an opinion, if you could please, please, find it in your hearts to remember, or at least side with us. Ty, I know you're, you're an educator. Having a school that builds tiny little lives into big, mature, productive ones is better than 15 one-million-dollar plots for somebody to live in one day. We can do that in a lot of places. There's still a lot of land out there. We don't need to succumb to development. We just need to keep a school there that actually produces wonderful lives. And we're willing, and I'm going on record in saying this, church members, if anybody's out there and you don't believe in our heartfelt plea, and you don't believe that we've been as good to you as you would like us to be, we'll change. If that's what we need to do, if you need something, tell us what it is. So again, I just, my plea is, when the decision is in your hands, please, I think the school's more important. Thanks.
Vice Mayor, um, my name is Hassan Waller. I was in a hit-and-run accident between Broward, between Commercial and Oakland Park on 59. And I put my name, you know, on a, on a police report because I was in the backseat of a truck. Just to make a long story short, the very next day, I was, I was on 13th at 227, which, you know, I do a lot of community work, you know, pick up paper, clean up, see beer cans, you know, stuff like that. And so that particular night, it was about 9:30, and I'm sitting on a curb, and like four Boynton Beach police officers pulled up on me. And they asked me like, "What's your date of birth?" And I'm, I'm like, "1/20/69." And so the officer, he really acted like he didn't hear me. So he continued to ask me. And so I stood up to make sure that when I tell my date of birth, that everybody in the crowd would hear it. So I gave my date of birth, and then he got physical with me. And they threw me in a police car, in which I got scrapes. I fractured my thumb. And I told them, they said, "Well, you're gonna get a citation." I said, "Well, I'm agreeing to sign it." The only reason why, that they can take you to jail if you don't sign it. If you refuse to sign, then they have probable cause to take you to jail. But I agreed to sign it. But after I agreed to sign it, they still drove me off. And I was like wondering, like, what, what, what are you guys gonna do, kill me? Because it's like, I have, I have had citations, and I should have had been left on the scene if I just go ahead and sign it. Once they read my name and they saw that it was clear. And I explained to them that I just was in a car accident, and they held me in a police car for like two hours, and they, and they made me walk home. And I don't really think that's fair. I feel like my, my, my life is, I'm afraid right now. I'm afraid of my life, and I'm just coming here just to let, you know, the city, the mayor know that you shouldn't want nobody in your city to be afraid, and I'm afraid of my life. And I'm gonna follow all the proper procedures to get to the bottom of this because it's not fair to be, they, they didn't ask anybody else but me. So I feel like that was a hit put out on me and my date of birth. When they asked me what my date of birth was, is that they got the right, the right man. May God bless y'all, and y'all have a great night.
One second, before you proceed. Chief Snow, could you please connect with that gentleman? And ma'am, when you're ready, please begin.
Hello, my name is Esther Jerry, and I'm a citizen of Boynton Beach. And I stand with the Davis and Thompson family, trying to get justice for S.J., calling for the firing of Officer Mark Son. I've been attending these meetings since S.J.'s demise. And you know, it's really sickening that we have to continue to wait almost five months and Officer Mark Son is not fired. We've been reaching out to the city officials to fire this officer. He have murdered three black men in our community, and we are sick and we are tired of it. We've been coming here, asking our city officials to care about us, to care about S.J.'s death, and we're sick and tired of waiting. If this was any one of your children, I'm pretty sure this officer would be arrested and fired by now. We wouldn't, I mean, I have grandkids, S.J. peer. The day after Christmas, where they couldn't even enjoy their toys. Do you know what we were doing? We were making Rest In Peace posters, "We want justice for S.J." And here it is, five, almost five months later, still no justice. I'm pretty sure if S.J. looted like you, this officer would have been fired. And I'm trying to baffle in my mind, how can this officer kill three people and you tell us that you have to do an investigation? We have to wait 180 days for an investigation? What? I mean, do our lives mean anything to you? Anything at all? When is this gonna be over so we can go ahead and live a normal life? So S.J.'s family and his peers can mourn in peace? We have to take time out of our schedules to come down here, and we're gonna keep doing it until we get justice? We've been asking for months now, and nobody seemed to do anything. When is our lives gonna matter? This young man didn't have to die. He died at the hand of a prejudiced officer. And we demand that he be arrested, fired, and arrested. He's sitting at home, enjoying his family, while this family is here grieving. We're sick and tired of it. We are sick and tired of it, and we want justice for S.J. And we're not going away.
Next speaker, please approach the podium. Sir, one second. I said we would alternate between both sides. We heard someone in this side, if anybody in the right side would like to approach the podium, and we'll come to you next.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, my name is Holly Scott. I'm the owner of a food truck called Rusty's Car Cuzine Food Truck. And apparently, I'm here today because I'm seeking the assistance from the city for myself and other food truck members who's been affected by not having an allocated area to operate freely without the harassment of zoning. And recently, I was told that there was no parking permit allowed for the food truck vendors. And I recently got a parking on a private property on Federal and Ocean. And on my first day of operating there, I was arrested by a zoning staff who told me that we have to go, we need a permit. When I approached the city, they told us that the rule was off, and now it's back in place without any notification. The landlord didn't know about it. He had a previous truck that was there for six months without any harassment. And I don't know why, on my first day, I was attacked. I don't know if it's a racial issues or anything, but I'm here today to seek the assistance where I can operate freely as a mother of young children and to provide a service which not exist in the city, where there's no Caribbean food restaurants or food truck in the city. And I'm just having a hard time. Also, I'm registered on the city as a vendor for their events, and I've been barely selected for any events. On the last event here on Sunday, I attended for the first time. I'm seeking for assistance to be selection among the city vendors because there is no, as I said, no other food trucks like mine as a vendor on the city vendor list as well. As I said, I'm a single mother, and I would like to be operated freely, providing for my kids. So I would like the city to assist the food truck owners, like other cities do, like providing a located parking area where we can operate it freely without the harassment of the zoning staffs.
All right, thank you for your time, and please leave your contact information. Ma'am, please leave your contact information with staff. Ms. Gibson is right next to you. Next speaker, please approach the podium, and this time on my left.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Toroxik.
Sir, could you bring the microphone a little bit closer?
My name is Peter Toroxik. I'm a food and beverage contractor with City of Boynton Beach and Palm Beach County. The reason I'm here, I see the city, the city attorney office sending legal invoices to you to pay him, pay them from the taxpayer money. Don't do it. Get a review, what happened? The city attorney office make the fire, and they try to put the money in their pocket. Wait until when the court decide on this case and decide pay or not. Another thing, accordingly to the attorney office, in the past three years, the ex-city manager who was fired corruptly led them to keep the job without public advertisement. That's a service, like a janitorial, like my food service. Put on public record, maybe, and other attorney group can provide cheaper service for the taxpayers. But what we see is concocting falsehood, like somebody put fire on their house, and after go to collecting from the insurance company, that's what they did. Invoicing $250 per hour because they're reading my emails. And they go to the court, I give it to you, the next coordinate is here, that's for the city. And during this time, they just get the profit. No, no, it's not right. Investigate them, what they doing, and fire them. Fire Cherov, and fire all of them who's involved in this concocted falsehood. But they told me, I mean, misrepresented, they told me I'm a liar. No, they are. If they misrepresented what I said, they misrepresent themselves. They lied to, lied to you, lied to the city. I'm just came here to tell you the record, and we never give up, and we tell to the court what happened. Discriminate, they tried to discriminate me on the ground on equal opportunity. They checked my background, but they didn't check the other vice. The other background is full of criminal conviction, full of bankruptcy, procure prostitution, elude the police. It's in the document. Did the, did the procurement management show it to you? Did Cherov show it to you? They supposed to do this before me. I had to hire a private investigator to get those fact in front of the city commission, or they supposed to do. Thank you very much.
My name is Mike McConville. I'm a father and resident of District 3. I'm here tonight to talk to you about St. Joseph's School, which is not on your agenda and not on your docket. There's nothing to review. We're here preemptively because of the way that this situation has gone down between the church and the school, and the really sort of underhanded way that it's been handled. We expect the worst, and we expect that something's going to show up on your desk at some point, where there's gonna be an ask for a change of use, where this unfortunate that the school has been kicked off the property. There's a whole bunch of legal lawsuits that are gonna work their way through, and it's a religious organization. They've been known to play the long game, thousands of years. So we fully expect them to play the long game. I come here tonight along with a number of other families. Again, this is not on your agenda, there's nothing for you guys to decide tonight. But we wanna make you aware, and we wanna make other people aware, specifically the folks that might be coming from out of town. And I'm gonna say a name, the name Lang Lowry. It's an individual that is working on behalf of the church, special projects. The special project at this point is probably land development for that acres of very prime real estate. And I would ask a couple of things of the commission. I know full well that you cannot say one way or the other, whether you would support redevelopment, rezoning, any of those things. If things are done the legal way, and they're done the appropriate way, know what the process looks like. But I would ask each of you to commit to not accept any donated money from Lang Lowry, because we know how they operate. This is not the first time that the Episcopal Church has taken property from the Episcopal community for an alternate purpose. So I would ask, just look at yourselves, consider that. And I'd also ask for you to think about the impacts of any kind of future change of use. I think the statement was, the existing structure and the existing facilities are a known draw on the community supplies. And any kind of change is gonna dramatically impact the services that need to be provided by the city. There's a large group of people with a lot of emotional opinions about it. There's a large group of people with a lot of emotional opinions about this. Logic dictates that this will probably land in front of your laps. And I don't think you're gonna see these people go away. We want that to be known. Thank you.
Begin when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Matthew Pichoto, and I am 11 years old and a fifth grade student at St. Joseph's Episcopal School. Recently, I, my brother has graduated from eighth grade at this school. I love St. Joe's because it has been my home away from home for my entire life. I have improved my academics, social skills, athletics, and more. This school has helped me step out of my comfort zone a lot, encouraging me to take main roles in plays, make beautiful art pieces, and play new sports. The teachers out there are the best. They make us feel safe and make learning fun. For example, my English teacher every morning has brain teasers to help us warm up our brain in the morning. They're super fun, and I really love bonding with our first graders through our Reading Buddies program and get to be a role model for the little kids as they grow up. Please help us not let this special place see its doors closed. Thank you all for your time.
You may begin. My name is Stafford. I have two daughters, 19 and 15, and I had to suffer through what Epstein did right here in Palm Beach County. And when we are sitting here talking about all this virtue signaling and ignoring the Constitution, and Mr. Tai, no disrespect, but you need to read the Constitution, sir. We are talking about defending our families. We are talking about freedom of speech without all of the shame, blame, and guilt of all of the stuff that's going on. And somehow, inflation is going through the roof. And you guys are proclimating. You're handing out awards to everybody, patting yourself on the back while we're all suffering. We're all suffering. So I mean, if you really are leaders, and sir, I met you on a boat one time, Mr. Woodrow, Mr. Hay, I met you on a boat. You know, the boat over there. And I think you're a fine gentleman, I really do. I need you to lead, sir. Because we got the prior mayor out here. He's on his phone, staring at his phone like some kind of TikTok 20-year-old while we're dealing with this stuff, schools, inflation, real stuff. Please read the Constitution, gentlemen and ladies. I mean, with all due respect, know what the Constitution is, and stop doing this pandering. It's not working. It's not working. The black people, and the Hispanic people, and the Haitian people, and everybody out here, we are not fighting with each other. You guys are making this fight with each other. When you're like, we're gonna, we're gonna single out this one. And I was the one taking pictures of the Haitian gentleman with his child and cheering on the Asian little girl. These are our leaders. So when these, when these parents are talking to you about the schools, for God's sake, help us. I mean, please listen to what we're talking about. This is not games. And Biden is completely blowing us up while you guys keep handing out awards to each other. Like, come on, please show up, we're begging you guys. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
About time to hear from my mom. All right, my name is Andrea Barnett. I've been a resident of Boynton Beach for 14 years. And if you're unfamiliar, Lang Lowry is an outsider of this community. So he's part of the Episcopal Diocese of Atlanta, Georgia. And his role is to help churches figure out what to do with their real estate. He recently met with Father Marty from St. Joseph's Episcopal Church here in Boynton Beach. And it was to discuss the future of our school, St. Joseph's Episcopal School. Now let me quote Lowry in an interview with the Florida Times-Union of Jacksonville in 2020. "Faith isn't about God, it's also faith in a place. The building becomes part of the faith. What happens is they give, and give, and give more money to the walls. Why would you worship walls? Why not find a cheaper place to worship and use the property for income?" "Use the property for income," those are his words. So unfortunately, his strategy is here to kick out a school, not a church. So the land is needed for the school. Our goal as parents is to provide the best learning environment for our children. That environment is now being taken away from us. So if the temptation of greed in the current real estate market is even a possibility, it is your moral and political obligation to eliminate any internal or external parties that are enticed to develop in that land where our young children once played. It's time to help us speak up when our children's voices cannot be heard. St. Joseph's Episcopal School is one of the top private schools in Boynton Beach here since 1958. It would devastate the community if it closes. We as parents will stop at nothing to demonstrate our strength to save the striving school. So the question is, we are your voters, and we support you. Will you support us? Thank you.
Hello. Hello, okay. Hello, my name is Chris Chisulie. I'm a Boynton Beach resident, 3850 South Lake Drive. I'm here to speak about St. Joe's. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Turkin for his, you know, unbridled help behind us here. And we are in his district, and he's been very, very helpful with that. I'd also like to thank the Vice Mayor for meeting with us and the city manager for taking that time to meet with us as a group. It means a lot, it really does, it really does. So going on to the St. Joe's thing, of course, you know why we're here. This is unfortunately some type of difference between church and school. You would think in a Christian environment, you know, I saw we started out with the prayer here. That's what St. Joe's needs. We need everyone's prayers. Because in this environment, you wouldn't think that it would have come to this. You know, we've, I don't know how we got here. You know, we're just trying to dig ourselves out. My wife is a teacher at the school. My daughter is in sixth grade at the school. And, you know, she wants to graduate eighth grade there, and she's been there since she's one years old. So she doesn't know anything else, and we wanna protect that. This is a beautiful place that the church kind of unfortunately dropped the bomb. It's a beautiful community. It's a, it's an institution in Boynton Beach. It's the highest point in Boynton Beach, I was told the other day. And the steeple used to be used like the water tower by fishermen back in the day to find Boynton and how to come into shore. So there's a lot of history there with the church and the school, and we have to preserve that. One thing I wanted to address, because you will hear things on the church side about how they attempted mediation with us, and they wanted to work with us. There was not really a mediation. It was more so an ultimatum-type offer where you guys, we'll give you one more year. Just make sure you sign this, and you're out next year, and we don't have any grief from you while you're here. So of course, that deal was never taken. So please don't believe that that was, that was real. I don't have a prepared statement. There was one other item, I forget what that was. But please don't believe everything you hear. We need your support. We need everyone's prayers. We need the city to remember what St. Joe's is, a very special place. And don't forget, they let us know, pass the choice program, opportunities in public school, pass the financial aid, because we have financial aid students that are at the school, pass all the deadlines for these children to find places. So it is very tragic. Thank you for your time.
My name is Kathy Nevad, and I was born and raised at St. Joseph's Episcopal School. I attended, my mother was the founding member and started the school in 1958. I attended there in 1958. I graduated from there. I've been a teacher there since 1988. I'm much more comfortable talking to three and four-year-olds. That school is my legacy. I'm not going anywhere. And I'm begging you all, begging you, please help us any way you can. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'm Edmira Ross. I'm 32 years educator in this county, 17 years business owner in the city of Boynton Beach, address 3300 South Congress Avenue. I'm here to just simply ask, well, I'm also the president of SEER Foundation, nonprofit organization, organization that's actually working in your community, working with at-risk kids, helping students in school, that working with single parents, helping the seniors rebuild their homes and all that. We're one of the organization that actually works in your city. But the problem I'm asked here for is asking for the city to be more transparent when you receive funds from the government, receive millions, sometimes even billions of dollars. And it seems to go to certain organizations, and the rest of us really don't hear about it. So things like that should be posted on your website. Things like that should be posted in the newspaper so that everybody has the opportunity to do their proposals and go and try to receive some of these funds, special organization that's actually working. But the bigger organization, or the more personal organization that deals with the city gets the funds. And what they do, they partner with us, who does the work. And they make it look good on paper, take pictures like we take pictures and get all the funds every year. So I'm simply just asking, just be a little more transparent when you receive funds from the government so we all can have a part, a special organization that really working. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donald Tarka Jr. I have lived in Boynton Beach, Florida since 1976. That's over 44 years, probably older than a lot of you, okay? I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, I've lived here a long time. One of the things is, we're building too many high rises. The city of Boynton voted a long time ago to keep a 40-foot limit. They keep seeing the vote around that against the voters. That's one thing. Two, our police department, I do believe you should contract it out to the sheriff's department. On April 14th, I am the gentleman that runs the Freedom of Speech events on Wilbright. Every Thursday, I was shot with a BB gun, right here, okay? I got it on, I got it on video. I reported it to the police. The police have told me they have it on video. They have the guy putting the gun out the window, shooting me. They have the license tag number. They just told me, you know, you know, it's a brand-new BMW out of Boca Raton. It's been over a month now. I was attacked. So if the Boynton Beach Police Department's not gonna do anything, maybe we should go to the sheriff's department. And what are you guys gonna keep doing to keep us safe? Because this is not the first time. Last year, we had a female drive by us four times, throwing things out the windows at us. You just missed me with a spray can. You know? Please do something to keep us safe, because we have our right. And being shot right here, almost a foot away from my eye, I could have lost an eye. So please do something to keep us safe. Thank you very much.
Mike McCray. First of all, I'd like to say to Mrs. Gibson, I wish you the best. I served under three city clerks. It was a breath of fresh air. I'd like to address the commission tonight on the private schools here in the city of Boynton. Some years ago, we lost St. Mark Catholic School. For whatever reason, that was a private school. Tonight, we hear from the citizens here in Boynton about St. Joseph Episcopal School. When people read the things that draw people to Boynton, schools are one of those things. And when they look on the private schools and have no schools to choose from, they go elsewhere. Thank you.
I'm with Kathy. I'm much better speaking with three and four-year-olds. But my name is Eric McCabe. I live at 714 Whispering Pines Road, Boynton Beach, Florida. I have three children through St. Joseph's School. And, you know, another thing I wanna make sure that mentioned is, we are a non-for-profit school. We, it's not, we're not some big wealthy, you know, school that's got, you know, just money coming out everywhere. But we have a strong, strong lineage. We have, I mean, Mrs. Nevad, when she spoke, she didn't, she failed to mention that her daughter actually teaches there. So her mother taught there, she taught there, and her daughter is now teaching there. We have, you know, people that have been born and baptized at school and have gone through, you know, and been all sorts of different things in life that has just become productive members and part of our society. At the end of the day, the only thing we have is each other. I mean, that's it. I mean, so you can take everything out of it. And what brings that together is the community and having that place together, which is our church and our school. So, I mean, I'm just asking, please, that whenever something comes across the table, you just consider the families, the community, and the people, because that's, that's all we are. So, thank you.
Cindy Falca de Carrado. I wanna talk about the spiritual atmosphere in Boynton Beach, which also goes with the school. As you know, we have the statue over there, that's a 666. It's a documentation of the mark of the beast for Boynton Beach. We also have on our road an LGBTQ sign, which is, again, it's segregation, it's racist against anybody who's not. And these things that we've paid for, $14,000 plus to maintain this insignia, which is a spirit that's been put over Boynton Beach. It grieves my heart. I stay up at night and I pray, and I ask God, where is the body of Christ? Here we have a school they're trying to shut down that is a spiritual school about the things of God. I went out to the prayer for the fifth, I believe it was. There was only a handful of people that came out to pray over Boynton Beach. I thank you for those who did show up, and you did show up, mayor. But it was very grievance to my spirit to see that all this is happening, and it all goes around a spiritual problem. As was stated before, we don't have a problem with each other. I believe we genuinely care about each other. I believe we genuinely care about Boynton Beach. That's why each and one of us is here tonight to represent Boynton Beach as people that live here, that speak into the community, and that wanna see community. I believe that's really the hearts of everybody in here tonight. And when I hear things such as separation of certain groups and this, that, or the other, we don't create that divide. Unfortunately, it does come from the dais. Nobody can help whether they're Hispanic or not, and they shouldn't be ostracized because they're not. No one can help it if their skin is lighter or darker. We were born that way. Why should one be pit against the other? And why should there be more favoritism for one than the other? You see, we're all created in the image of God, and that's how we have to be treated. And listen, again, I heard the other gentleman talk about the Constitution. If each and every one of you abided by your oaths to abide by the Constitution, we would never have divide, because you would understand that we are the people. You are limited in what you're allowed to do as leaders because we gave you that authority. And as these precious people are here tonight, standing and pleading for their school, they have every right to have that school. And you as leaders are to go and get under them and gird them up and give them and support and stand with them. That is your duty as a sworn-in public servant. I know we don't hear that word a lot, but that's exactly what you are, public servants, to do the will of the people. And for these people who are being attacked by police officers, and they've done no harm, if they would know the Constitution, the police officer would know, they cannot go up to anybody and harass them, period. It's unconstitutional. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the Vice Mayor to take control of the timer. I need to take a quick break. I'll be right back.
Right there. Okay?
Yes, my name is Brandon Brown of the, of the 706 Whispering Pines Road. I do actually support having PBSO come in. I think the resources, there's so many people here, I think would be helpful. But the reason I'm here is the school. You know, I've got a daughter that goes there. I got a son that's about to go there soon. And, um, you know, when you think about Florida schools, usually you don't always have the best perception in your mind, you think Florida schools. This school is an amazing school. We did tours of tons of other schools in the area. You know, as a parent, you hem and haw and you think about these things and you think about your kid's future, where they're going to be and having a good school as a fixture of a community is just incredibly important. You know, I cannot think of a better use than a school. I mean, we don't need, we don't need more housing. I mean, you know, that road can barely handle, the cars coming in as it is, adding more housing, whether it be multimillion-dollar houses or building up or whatever, it would just be a huge waste. You know, I've heard people talking about possible, you know, rehab facilities. Look, this is a family community. What we need to have is good schools. I mean, there's really just no better use than that. You know, we plan on being here a long time. And, I mean, look at the room. There's, there's just an outpouring of support here. There is people thinking about their kids. They're thinking about what might be happening going into November, like this lease thing. It's, it's crazy. And, you know, the, the only thing, and, and, and it was referenced a few times before, is that the, we've been given no answers as to why. And the only thing we can possibly think of is some sort of land use deal, some sort of change of use, which again, is going to come across y'all's desks. You know, you have got to really think about what you want this community to look like. And you've got to think, you know, do we want to have a thriving school for our children and that's, that's excelling? I mean, there's nothing better than that for this community. And I just can't think of anything better. So I really hope that you consider this, you think about this in the future, you think about the impact in community and what it can do. So just thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next speaker?
My name is Jeremiah America. I live at 695 Chapel Hill Boulevard. Basically, I kind of want to bring a personal touch to it because I have a nine-year-old son that attends St. Joe's. And before that, he bounced around to a few different schools. And when he got to this school, you know, he had speech delay and reading delays and all these different things. And this school has, the teachers, the leadership of this school is absolutely amazing. Has, this, this kid has blossomed into an A student that is successful. He's happy. He's a leader. He's doing and destined to do great things. And that's what we want in a sense of community. And the, in, in this community that is built all around the school, I mean, these are all people that I see on a daily basis that live in my neighborhood, that we drive past, we wave, we say hi, we ride our bikes to school, we do all these different things. And if this school is impacted and removed, it, it's, it's going to be a significant loss to this community, a significant, a significant loss to these children. I mean, the, the children that come out of this school, if you look, I know, I know kids that are now graduated from great colleges that are successful people in life and they've gone to this school. And, and, and the thing I don't understand is that this school has become one of the most desired private schools or Christian schools to go to in the area that is, is profitable, that is ran in a, in a, in a fabulous way. And all of a sudden, it's just, it's being wiped off, you know, the property. And it, it makes no sense. There is, there is no logic behind this move besides greed. And, and we just need to call it that. And I just hope when anything comes to your, your, your commission onto your desk, that you take a, a really good heartfelt look at it and understand that putting up more housing or doing whatever kind of development you're going to do in that community is not going to help the children that don't really have other options right now because we're, we're being in, influx of people coming down here. The schools are getting, you know, filled to capacity. The, the options for public and private are, are, you know, there's wait lists for all these other schools that we could, you know, potentially maybe go to or whatever. But it, but, but those other schools aren't, aren't in our community. They're not in our community. They're several miles down the road or in other areas. And if we want a strong community, you've got to start with education. You've got to start with educating children at a young age and raising good people and raising good, good stewards of the environment, good stewards of the community. And you take a school like this out with all the great teachers and all the great faculty and the people that are running it right now, and, and, and Boynton's going to pay for it. Boynton is going to pay for it. And the things that you're seeing happening now are going to continue.
My name is Susan Ducata. And I did not plan to get up to speak tonight, but I dearly, dearly love this school. And that's why we're here. But my granddaughter has been there since she's two, begged me to say something. So, this is Madison Ducata.
Hello, my name is Madison and I've been at this school for about seven years now. And it's a very good school. I do not want it to end. I see a lot of people graduate and have better, have a happy life. I don't know why they want to cancel our school, but it isn't the right thing to do. They need to think about this because our school is so amazing. It has the best teachers, it has like, I, I realized that I become smarter. And my little brother, he's like five years old and he's been starting to read ever since he's been going to this school. And I just went to school to last and it's been over here for almost, well, over 60 years. So, yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Anders Vida. I was born right down the road in Bethesda Hospital. Boynton Beach has been and will always be an integral part of my life. I just have one thing tonight. I just want to remind the council that our children are the future. Children will always be the future. So I would like to implore the esteemed members of this council, if such time comes to pass, when you are asked to render a judgment on the zoning use of St. Joseph's Episcopal School, to stand for the children, to stand for the future and to do the right thing. That's all. Thank you.
Any more speakers on the left side of the room? On this side? Yes. Come on up. Approach the podium.
I just want to say, this school means everything to me. By the way, my name is Carlton Evelyn. And I've been at this school for, I don't know, it's been that much years, but I've haven't even keeping track of how many years I've been there. So I just want to say, I don't want this school to end. I don't want this, this little kicked out to get replaced by whatever. I think the church and the school are nice together and they belong together. And I don't want this school to get kicked out and placed whatever. I just, I already said that. So, um, so I just want to say, thank you for listening to me and SOS, save our school.
Hello. Um, my name is Caitlin Chisulee. I live at 3850 South Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida. I was born in Boynton Beach. I've lived in Boynton Beach my whole life. I've been going to the school ever since before I was one years old. I went, I've gone to the ECA and then moved to the other location, St. Joseph's. And this school, I've, I've been going for so long. I, I've wanted to graduate here. If I, everyone's talking about how we're not, there's no schools open for us. My parents have been asking where I want to go. I'm not going anywhere else. This, this is my school. I'm not leaving. This school has taught me so much. I was, been in PK with Kathy Nevad, who spoke. She was my PK teacher. And then now I'm in sixth grade. Now I'm in middle school. I've made sports teams and learned how to play volleyball. I did not know how to play volleyball. And at this school, there's so much to offer. This school, we have a J&amp;N studio. We have a television every week, a little J&amp;N thing, which is for news. That's very cool to me, I think. This school, we can't lose it. It's been around for 65 years. This school's my family. All my friends are from this school. All of my friends, I did not know anyone before this school. I, I didn't know anyone. So, if I leave... Thank you.
Any other speakers that would like to approach the podium? Please do so now. From either side.
Hello, my name is Jacob Hoyer and I am in fifth grade and I am here for St. Joseph's. I have been going here for so many years. This is my home away from my inside home. I love this school. I'm smarter. I am more, um, like advanced in sports. And as earlier mentioned, our J&amp;N, I am an anchor for that. And if, I would like to be an NBA player when I grow up. And if that doesn't work out, I could also be an anchor. This school has helped me go through a lot of paths, what I want to be. And, yeah. Everyone there is my brother and sister. Love this school. Save our school. Thank you so much for our time.
Any other speakers in person? If you'd like to, I'm sorry, one second, Mr. Graham. If anybody else would like to speak, just please form a line around the podium so I can see. All right? Mr. Graham, begin.
Bryce Graham, second vice president, National Network Center, Florida chapter. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "I've decided to stick with love because hate is too great a burden." And what we see happening all across America and even in Boynton Beach is that of a spirit of hate. Hate on all levels. Hate when you have little kids in here crying out for their school to stay in their community with no other options because our nation is in a crisis. Florida is in a crisis where people are moving here all, from all across the country, inundated, but yet they are crying out. Hate when you have a police department that are full of terrorists and monsters. Well, my late mentor, Dr. Dick Gregory, said that America would watch a life, tolerate a life being taken away more than they would tolerate anything else. And so I've come, month after month after month, demanding that you fire Officer Mark Shawn in the death of Stanley Dale Davis III. A life that did not have to be taken, but was taken at the hands of a prejudiced, prejudiced officer who has done it consistently, time and time again. And you all allow him to still be on the force. When will we be tired? When will enough be enough? And as I close with the words of my mentor, Dick Gregory, that we cannot be civil and act as if things are all right. We cannot act without haste and act as if things are all right. Because we will soon know who the people are in Boynton Beach when they rise up. Thank you.
Good evening. Kristy Ward, um, from Boynton Beach. I am a lifetime resident. Been here for almost 47 years. What I've been hearing tonight is heartbreaking, especially with children. Because it's like there is no other option, but there is an option. It's an option for us to self-examine ourselves, to say, what do we want that could be greater and better for community? And that is to help each other. I remember seeing this picture online and it was people sitting around a table and they had spoons that was very long. They couldn't feed themselves. So when you looked in these rooms, you saw one where the people were fat and one where they were starved. And what was happening is, because they were trying to feed themselves with the long spoon, they starved. But when they took that spoon and they fed one another, they were fattened. So the thing is, we're community. All together, we can come together and make something great. The problem is, is we're putting profit over people. And we're no longer looking at people as people. We're so busy trying to line our own pockets, what's in it for me? But the thing is, our children are our future. How are we able to pass a mantle if we're constantly self-serving? I do not like this, that these children are getting before you and you can tell how intelligent, how they articulate. I am so used to growing up, to being outside and these children look like they just want to do more, instead of just being home, inside, playing video games. We have to come together and there has to be a transparency. We have to step up to be successful. And the only way we're going to do that is hear one another, be there for one another, and take out the fact that we're trying to do for ourselves and do for others. We need to love one another as we love ourselves. And if you don't love yourself, you better get that together so you can start loving everybody else. We need to come together because community is all of us as a whole. And being a servant is not self-serving, it's serving others. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sharda Hunter. I'm SJ's aunt. So today, I just want to read a Florida statute for reckless driving. And it says here, "Any person who drives any vehicle in a willful or wanton disregard for the safety of persons or property is guilty of reckless driving." Or, "Someone fleeing, fleeing a law enforcement officer in a motor vehicle is also reckless driving." Mark initially stated, Officer Mark Shawn, Song, sorry, initially stated in his reason for pursuing SJ was because he was driving reckless. SJ did not drive any vehicle in a willful or wanton disregard, nor was he fleeing law enforcement as he pulled into the gas station. SJ could not have been fleeing any officer or else what, else would have meant, or else that would have meant, he was already being pursued prior to entering the gas station and being chased. prior to entering the gas station and being chased down unlawful. Instead, what we do know and have all watched was SJ pulled into a gas station driving in a very calm manner with regards to safety of others as pedestrians observed on the footage within the feet of him. We also observed as he pulled into the gas station, there was no trailing of the officer behind him, so he was not fleeing. We also all witnessed on camera Mark's police car watching and preying on him. We have yet to see any footage of what Mark in the media portrayed as driving reckless that initiated this chase, or excuse me, this pursuit. I just find it baffling that this officer was, is even, was even being able to pursue anyone, you know, after the cause, after he caused the, the death of five-year-old Jaden. You know, so for him to say that my nephew was reckless driver, my nephew has never killed anybody. You know, my nephew has never caused anybody's death. My nephew has never caused anybody's accident driving his dirt bike. But we all know that that officer is responsible for deaths using a vehicle, pursuing high-speed chase in neighborhoods. And as of December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, my nephew, after Jaden's death, he should have never, ever been able to be put in a vehicle as an officer. He should have been fired from that point on or be made, if, if he had to be on the force, he should have been made a mall cop or something on foot. Should have never given him another vehicle or my nephew would have been here to this day.
Any other in-person speakers before we go to the virtual group?
Does this work? My name is Jackson Doyle. I've been at St. Joseph's my entire life. I have made more friends and gotten better at stage performance. I used to have a lot of stage fright. We even have our own news program called JNN. And so what I'm really trying to say is, we really need to save our school. It's important to me and all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Shannon Thompson, Stanley Dale Davis III's mother. As you guys may have heard, we are winding down to the conclusion of this case. So moving forward, I will be representing the policies and breaking it down. Moving forward, I also want to just point out, Mark did not just only break the pursuit policy, but he broke several policies, as I will be coming forth every time in this meeting and enlightening and educating you guys as well. So internal affairs would be able to conclude their investigation the proper way this time. Now, speaking on this pursuit policy, I just want to reiterate some of the things that it says. The policy is defined as a decision to initiate pursuit must be based on the pursuing officer's conclusion that the immediate danger to the officer and the public created by the pursuit is less than the immediate or potential danger to the public should the suspect remain at large. The pursuit must be conducted in a non-reckless manner with emphasis on the safety of the public, human rights, and property of others. So it is fair to conclude, Mark Shone felt the potential danger to the public was by far more sufficient should the suspect remain at large. So the suspect that happens to be a thirteen-year-old, honor roll scholar kid, never been suspended from school, who was leaving a gas station from simply getting gas, was a potential danger to the, to the public? Should he safely exit the gas station the same way he entered and returned home? The policy also states vehicular pursuits will be initiated only if the officer reasonably believes the person fleeing has committed a forcible felony. Which paying five dollars for gas and fearful leaving before actually pumping the gas is not listed under the forcible felonies that will have warranted a pursuit. Any pursuit must be conducted in accordance with the directive and only those officers who have received instructional training and the high-speed pursuit policy will engage in a vehicular pursuit. After two prior deaths, there's no way Mark even exemplifies as a person who received instructional training in high-speed pursuit. In fact, she, he should have never even been allowed to participate in a high-speed pursuit.
Next speaker.
Bishop Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, former candidate for Commissioner and Mayor and anticipated candidate for District Two Commission coming of March. Let me say this, so much to say, I want to say when it comes to these children first. I think you all should take that to heart. I'm sure you're all going to do the right thing. It's been enough appealing to y'all, better judgment in that respect. But let me just talk about something else right now. My name was inappropriately placed in an arrest document that has caused a wildfire in Boynton Beach, calling me a snitch. Everyone in your system, the sheriff's system and every sheriff from LA, Clark County, LA County, from Boston down to Dade County, know I ain't never snitched on a person in my life and you all know it. And the Boynton Beach Police Department thanked God for Chief Snow who came in and unseated, and y'all have on y'all website right now exonerating me from ever having a statement to make to any police officer about any case, anywhere, anything I see, don't see, hear, don't hear, except if something happened to your child. If a duck stood on their own bottom. That's why I'm alive today turning seventy, coming out the streets. Your first ever returning citizen to run for an elected office, standing up in the paper to see change for the better for the people. I'm out of District Two. I don't know what district they're out of, but it doesn't matter, they're from Boynton. And it's all about what's right. And you all elected to do what's right and what's right for the people and not for yourselves. There's so much corruption going on in this city that the detective, I'm asking they should be demoted. Now, we're not going to talk about the dollar signs that is involved that I see. What I see more and primarily is fixing this city. The sheriff can't fix it. Governor can't fix it. Nobody can fix it but us. So we're going to stand, being a parent of our own child, this police department, and we're going to make sure the Community Review Board, which I'm president of, and I just dedicated her to God be the glory, Shannon Thompson, but listen to me real good. This is a community review board of our community. And it's time that y'all recognize this mayor's president and Latasha Clemens as vice president, though she are not here active, she's still on this document as our vice president. We have a community review board. We're going to review everything, one of them on this force who name come up, been in any type of aggression, any excessive force. And if that file is not where it's supposed to be, we're asking that they be relieved. Simple as that. So we're going to fix our own department. And this is what the Community Review Board is advocating right now, that everyone on that department file be reviewed. If your name come up just too many times, by the grace of God, God bless y'all, have a good day.
How you doing? Wesley Schuler, six eighteen Northwest Second Street. It really puzzled me that I got children too. But it really puzzled me to see these children come down here and let y'all know where they stand at about these developers. Now, I deal with developers because of my business. But not only that, these developers is very getting aggressive. They getting aggressive. And whatever they want, they gonna get it. At means unnecessary for them. Like West Lake over there on Village in West Palm Beach. You can see it off ninety-five. They put apartments around the church. It's up, you could visit yourself and see. But they let you know where they stand at. And y'all need to make a statement on paper that y'all going to stop whatever development go, go, go around the church or whatever, schools. Because at the end of the day, the schools need to stand on their own feet. But the schools can't stand on their own feet because they asking the, the city to help them out right now. It should not have to come to this point because at the end of the day, mayor, that's your field. That should be no-brainer. At the end of the day, y'all need to sit down and look at the situation because it's not a pretty sight to see. Because at the end of the day, when you go home and lay down at night and you go against that vote and that vote tell you, you should have did it after you done did it, that's a hard feeling. But these children is, is basically telling y'all, y'all need to do the right thing. And if you got it on your heart, do the right thing. Whatever situation is that they talking about bringing in the sheriff, that's not going to fix it. You can't put a Band-Aid on top of another Band-Aid. You just have to deal with what you got. You got the decks of hands in front of you, deal with it.
Last call for in-person speakers and then we'll switch over to the virtual group. Sir, sir, one second. You have already spoken, I want to make sure everybody else had an opportunity, okay? Per our rules, each person only gets three minutes per meeting. Yes, that's why I said, please leave your contact information and we'll reach out to you after the meeting. All right, thank you, sir. Again, last call for in-person speakers and we'll switch over to the virtual group.
Hi, Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Unit four oh seven, Boynton Beach, also known as Harbor Hall Inlet Club, where District Two Commissioner never comes to help us. We got sewers backing up with human waste, blood, semen, whatever. And the city has to come out and vacuum up four thousand, four thousand gallons of sewage all over our property from the neighbor who this commissioner doesn't even answer emails. You know, Mr. Hay, Reverend Hay, you should resign so quick. Not just for the SJ case, but for the way you handle the district. And Mr. Persaga, the way you handle District Four, you should see in the municipal court here with the magistrate, the things that you allowed to happen for four years in homes. And you got a big smile because you pulled a, you pulled a nice trick with that you wouldn't resign until, so somebody else couldn't get elected. So this cop's wife gets elected, right? So you can run the scam you're running here. The other thing, I was looking up federal law about swearing in and running for office. You filed a application to run for mayor in the name of Ty Persaga. Your name is Amir, E-M-I-R, Tyrone Persaga. You filed a false document. You were sworn in here by a state attorney and he said, do you Ty Persaga? And you said, yes, I do. You should be recalled. You can't, you can't submit a, a fraud name and look at your picture over there. Ty Persaga, it's a fraud. You're a fraud name. You're, you didn't tell the people that you're up in Riviera Beach teaching eight, ten hours a day? You're not even here. And then you take over the mayor's office? And then you put these evil things all over the city like you're proud of them? How are you getting away with this? And look at the city manager looking at me. We got a, we got a, a no-good fireman as a city manager now who does nothing. He doesn't answer emails. This law firm should be fired, 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 but they're still here. Millions of dollars you're paying them and they're so corrupt. Look what they're doing out of Fort Lauderdale. Everything's out of Fort Lauderdale with you guys. All your police, your chiefs, Fort Lauderdale, all your developers. Well, you know, you're, you're destroying this city. Look at these people crying here. And you think it's funny, Amir? Why don't you use your real name? And I'll tell you, I'm applying to the, uh, state attorney who swore you in. That, that swearing that you did was fraud. Just like that picture's fraud over there, Ty. Your name is Amir, E-M-I-R, and I'm going to be getting some public documents from the city that shows that you filed a false application under a phony name to run for mayor. And we all know why. You want to talk about why? What don't you like about the name Amir? Huh? Why don't you talk about it? Right? All the reverse discrimination that you pull on everybody and you think you could just get away with it with that phony name on your placard there? And what are you looking at? Fake lawyer and fake city manager, fake commissioner and a know-nothing vice mayor? You guys are a disgrace. How much time do I have? And what you're doing with the Ty case, I got so much information, it's fraud.
Please begin when you are ready, sir.
All right. Stephen Grant, P O Box four two four, Boynton Beach, Florida, three three four two five, former mayor of Boynton Beach. And I just want to thank you for all that you're doing here, being public servants on behalf of the residents and the businesses here in Boynton Beach. The previous speaker, yeah, he never responded to my emails either, so don't feel bad. And all those comments that he was making, you know, I've never heard anyone from the Palm Beach Post, Sun Sentinel, or any of you other news organizations make comments here at the meeting. So I don't know what kind of press credentials he has trying to create his own news.
And excuse me. Do not interrupt the speaker's time, continue, sir.
So that's kind of where I want to say thank you and, you know, speaking on to St. Joseph's Episcopal School, I only have fond memories of there. They had a entrepreneurship program for the, I believe, the fifth graders. And going to see those students, you know, have an own business. And it's something that everyone, as you heard, we need to do whatever we can to, to keep the schools. We need to understand who we are as I, as identity of Boynton Beach. And I, I look forward to being part of more of the meetings in the future. I know that you have one tomorrow regarding American Rescue Plan Act funds. You know, my only comment is, is that it is your decision where the money goes. It shouldn't necessarily be staff's decision and that you have the ability to make a, a choice that could have a wonderful investment into the city. You know, part of a, a lot of things that we've had in the past is that we've covered up symptoms or tried to remove something to hide a symptom. But we're not really getting to the problems of, you know, the community. And I, I think that the, the budget hearing, we, we should really advertise that and give people the opportunity to speak at this public comments to say what they would like to do differently through the budget. Because that is the one recourse that we have is how do we allocate the city's funds to best use those funds for the future. It, it's been an exciting six weeks, seven weeks not being the mayor and, you know, getting into my law practice, getting into my campaign for US Center with no party affiliation. And I really appreciate all of your dedication to the city because you are actually and absolutely making a difference for the better. So thank you so much.
So Mr. McNally, we are gonna, sir. In-person public comments is now closed. Mr. McNally, we're going to switch over to virtual speakers. Mr. McNally, how many hands do we have raised?
Thank you, Mayor. Officer, we have, we have six individuals that have their hands raised and I'm going to start with Mr. David Katz first.
All right, so when he's.
You're self-muted, if you could unmute your microphone.
I mean, when he begins. And I will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
Mr. David Katz, I've unmuted you, but your microphone is self-muted. If you could press the microphone button to unmute yourself. And if not, I'll move on to the next individual and come back, which I will do now. The next individual is Christina Romulus.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a little under the weather. I am battling COVID and it is not fun. So I, I wish a speedy recovery also to District Three Commissioner, who I believe is, is kind of going through the same thing. Maybe it's a District Three thing that's happening right now, who knows? But either way, I just wanted to first and foremost, thank the commission for recognizing Haitian Flag Day and Haitian Heritage Month here in the month of May. As a Haitian-American woman who was born in Haiti and immigrated here to this country, my culture and my background is something of great pride to me and also to my fellow Haitian nationals. This is a time of year. Uh, this is a time of year that we celebrate greatly. Uh, so I want to just thank the Commission for recognizing this day and our city staff for raising the flag, uh, tomorrow in honor of that. Secondly, I want to, um, give a hearty congratulations and a little bit of a sad farewell to our city clerk. She will be missed. I remember when she came and she filled in some, um, big shoes taking over for our previous, uh, city clerk, Judith Pyle. And she has done a tremendous job and has always been the epitome of excellence and grace. So I just want to thank her for her time. I congratulate her and her family. I know she has a beautiful baby at home, and she'll be spending lots of time taking care of those babies. And I wish her the best, um, with whatever comes next. Lastly, I just want to, uh, thank the Commission for the work that you guys continue to do. I know it's not easy to sit, um, for numerous hours and listen to comments, especially those that are negative or derogatory, um, especially when you feel that you're making decisions that are for the betterment of the city. I may not always agree with them, but again, I do thank you for your public service. And I, I, I am here, continue to be a resident of this city. And I, it was actually interesting to see Mayor Grant along here with, with me, uh, tonight as well. So it seems like a little bit of reunion is happening. But, um, I want to thank, uh, this Commission, and, um, I wish you all a great night. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the good work that you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. McNally, we're gonna move on to the next speaker. I believe that was the third on the list. Please unmute them and begin when you are ready. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining in the clock.
I have Mr. Gregory Hartman. I am unmuting you, and you are still self-muted. Please, if you could, there you go. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Gregory Hartman, 1083 25th Place. First, I'd like to say Crystal Gibson will be missed. She was a great asset for the city and a great person. I got to know her over the last year, and I want to wish her well in her future endeavors. I come before the Commission tonight to put my name out for the CRA Advisory Board. Uh, I'd love to serve our city on the CRA. I'm a small business owner who does, uh, video and marketing. I bring a small business owner's perspective. I know what it's like to attract small business. A lot of my peers are in the smaller startup industry. Uh, and I believe in the mission statement of the CRA, and I'd like to help further that as a civil servant helping our city. I believe there's an appointment tonight. I'd love to throw my name in the hat. Uh, I'm doing as much as I can to serve the community currently, and I think this would be a great step in a way that I could help bring a positive impact. Believe I'd be a vital asset to the city on the CRA Advisory Board, and I would appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I believe we are moving on to the fourth on the list. Mr. McNally, please unmute them when they are available.
That will be Mr. Kurt Denninghoff. I have unmuted you, and you are currently self-muted. If you could, just unmute your microphone. There we go.
Awesome. Yeah, I think I'm here. Uh, just wanted to thank the Commission for, uh, you know, sitting here for a couple hours. My name's Kurt Denninghoff. I work with a company called inspected.com. We're actually, um, a company that provides, uh, virtual inspections under the new, uh, Building Statute 553791. And, uh, the reason that I came, uh, here tonight is just that, uh, in light of all the people that are moving to Florida and all the new construction, everything like that, um, we're working with many different, uh, commissions and building departments across the state in order to provide, uh, private provider inspections. And, uh, would love to, uh, connect with you guys, see if I can come out and meet with you in terms of how we can better work together. Um, our service really improves economic output, and it's better for, uh, businesses, small businesses, as well as, uh, the constituents who can use our service. And, um, that's really it. I'd love to come in and meet you guys. And I'd like to know the best way to go about that.
Thank you. Mr. McNally, just, uh, proceed to the next speaker, please.
Yes, Sheila Gaines, who have been unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, Sheila Gaines, 2500 Contra Lee's Drive. In the first year of the COVID-19 pandemic, global prevalence of anxiety and depression increased by a massive 25%. In 2019, just prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, 19.86% of adults experienced a mental illness equivalent to nearly 50 million Americas, Americans, my apologies. Suicidal ideations continued to increase among adults in the U.S. Over half of adults with a mental illness do not receive treatment, totaling over 27 million adults in the U.S. who are going to go untreated. Over 60% of the youth with major depression do not receive any mental health treatment. Both adults and youth in the U.S. continue to lack adequate insurance coverage, coverage. Rates of substance abuse use are increasing for youth and adults even prior to COVID-19 pandemic. Over 2.5 million in the U.S. have severe depression, and youth are at greater risk. Tree Council Centers, along with Healthier Boynton, has created a therapeutic healing space, mental health care space for the community of Boynton Beach. We facilitate casual conversations with the primary therapist at Sarah Sims Park every Thursday from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. All are welcome to join. I say all this because mental health really does matter. Um, I, I empathize with the children, for the school. Um, I hope that you guys hear their cries. I empathize with the young men, with the situation with the police officer. I hope you guys reach out to him. But we are here to help heal our community. So if you're not doing anything on Thursdays at 5:30, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNally, was there another speaker, or was that it? Uh, Ms. Vanessa Belmonte, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Vanessa Belmonte. I'm a Boynton Beach resident, 100 Northeast 6th Street. Um, born in Bethesda Hospital many moons ago. So I am here to support the height restriction that's on the docket today and advocate for no more high rises. Also here to demand transparency with city initiatives and also demand transparency when the city receives donations from developers. Every candidate on that board right now, on that panel, except for one, Thomas Turkin, has received donations during their elections from developers. And I want everyone in the audience to hear that, because there's a lot of, um, so sad story with the school with St. Joseph's. And, and I know that we all can tell that the plan is to see development happen in that space. And so I really encourage everyone in the audience who's speaking up to continue to come and to continue to be involved and come to these meetings, because it's going to be on their docket soon. And it's up to us to continue to raise awareness and hopefully diminish the amount of overdevelopment that's happening here in our city. As the gentleman, um, I think about an hour ago, said the original ordinance in Boynton Beach was 40 feet. And now we're seeing 10-story buildings happening here. It's unacceptable. Downtown Delray is thriving with no high rises. But Opal Grand Resort is the highest building in downtown Delray, and they're only eight stories. We don't need to have high rises to be thriving. And more importantly, we should be focusing on enhancing and improving the current infrastructure, because our current infrastructure can no longer handle this continued density. On April 29th, there was intense flooding on East Ocean Avenue in front of Ocean Plaza. It was not a full moon. It was literally two hour, an hour and a half of rain. They had to close the road. Cars were stalled. There was police out there. And it was really horrible for the local residents to have to endure. But meanwhile, we're still building an eight-story high-rise right behind that plaza without addressing the issues of the infrastructure. Why are we keeping, why are we continuing to build and not addressing the local issues? There are parks that are closed down in this region and, and District 3, but we're still gonna, we're still gonna develop high rises? It makes no sense. And for the schools, I do have to say, I'm, I moved, moved back to Boynton Beach recently in hopes to start a family in the next two or three years, and the ratings are two out of 10 for public schools here. We are a two. But meanwhile, we're on closing schools, and we're focused on developing, and we're, we're worrying about issues that are not community-based and not here for our future.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you so much. Mr. McNally, can you confirm that all the hands have been addressed?
Uh, Mayor Prinsurga, yes, that was the last one, and I even tried to circle back to Mr. David Katz, but he is no longer online.
All right, thank you so much. Public comments are now closed. It is now 8:15, and so I'd like to ask the Commission, would you like to continue with the rest of the agenda? Would you like to take a short break?
Uh, Mayor, I, I'd like to, um, I, I think, uh, a break would be good. But I'd also like to say too, I can't see the audience there. However, uh, you know, would like to say, one of the reasons that I ran for this office was to make sure that the families, that the children, and that people who live in this city are heard first and foremost over any other special interest organization, you know, developer, any outside group. My heart goes out to all the parents that spoke earlier today. Uh, can't imagine what you're going through. I'm not a parent. But what I can tell you is that I will hold my promise in, you know, making sure that the children's and families are looked into first before anybody else. And, you know, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, um, within reason. And I think we all share that same vision, that we're here for the people, we're here for the families, and we're here for the children.
Commissioner Turkin, I could not echo more of what you just said. Um, seeing all the people here and all the children and how it has affected their families, uh, is, it's heartbreaking. And I've seen several individuals here get very teary-eyed. As an educator, you know, I, I would say you're speaking to the choir here. Uh, I want this school to stay as much as possible, uh, and I support them. The, the last thing we need is to lose another great school. I've spoken, I've spoken with many of the parents who called and emailed me. In fact, this was actually initially brought up to me when there was a gathering at the school. Um, and at that time, I had been told that the school was shutting down that weekend. Fortunately, that was incorrect information. Um, and I immediately called the school district. I called the soup, area superintendent, Dr. Peter Licata. I told him of the situation. I said, "Dr. Licata, what can we do for these families?" He said, "Mayor, we can assemble a team, get me a venue." Uh, if that indeed is the case, we can, um, work with the families, meet with them right now, and make sure that they find a school. I've spoken with the principal. Uh, the principal has asked me to hold off until all efforts have been exhausted. But I want the families to know, uh, that the school district, in partnership with the city, we are here, uh, to assist in what way we can. However, and again, this is stating the obvious, and I'm gonna have to ask counsel, to my knowledge, uh, there is no item brought before us. It might be too premature. Uh, counsel, do you have any insight on this from a legal standpoint?
Mr. Mayor, Mike Srollow, Deputy City Attorney, just, um, to just remind the, the counsel.
Could you bring the microphone a little bit closer?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No worries.
Um, just to remind the commission, um, this matter is in litigation, so we wouldn't want you all to comment on any matters that are in litigation. Um, and to the extent that there is no, to my knowledge and the knowledge of the city administration, any applications pending or submitted to the city, so be premature to make any comments or anything like that at this time.
Thank you, sir. And, and I am not aware of the specifics of any litigation, so I couldn't comment anyways. Um, but, but thank you to all the speakers and all the families and kids who came today. I want you to know that you have been heard, and we have listened to you, and we empathize. So if any other board members would like to speak, now would be the time before we proceed. Uh, Board Member Hay?
I would just like to, to say that it, it goes without saying that, uh, your words that you just said is very true. We all for, uh, the kids and trying to keep this, uh, school open. Uh, but just like, uh, other cases that are going on, we must be careful uh, as the legal just, uh, informed us on what we say here, because there's lit- litigation going on. But, uh, I am willing to do and work with the school board and, uh, from, from where I sit to try and make this happen, uh, when the, when the time is right. Um, I need to get more information, uh, from legal about this, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm all for the kids and, and keeping that school open. So, uh, at the end of the day, I, I think we all would say, uh, let's, let's do what we can, uh, to keep that school open.
Yeah, um, I, uh, agree with my colleagues. I feel like this is, as a parent, um, I can't imagine being in that place where you're given a last-minute announcement that you have to figure out what to do with your kids. And, um, in a time when everything is full and, and, and chaotic, um, the school should be the place where kids find safety and comfort and stability. And so, um, you know, it's my hope that this can get resolved in a way that's, uh, for the benefit of the children. And I, um, support my colleagues and, um, and want to do what is in our ability to do to help the families and the children in this situation.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Turkin. And to everybody who spoke this evening, I did, you have a motion for 10 minutes. Good, 10-minute recess?
Yeah. So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Thank you. We will see you in 10 minutes.
Okay, Mayor Prinsurga, the broadcast has resumed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are resuming from a 10-minute recess. And the next portion of the agenda is Section 5 Administrative 5A reads. Ms. Barbara Reedy is term limited as a board member on the Historic Resources Preservation Board and has requested that the City Commission consider her reappointment. Counsel, could you address this item first?
Yes, on this particular item, the, um, person is asking to be reappointed. And there is an exception under the city code that allows you to, uh, allow that to go beyond the term limit with, uh, the consent city commission.
All right. Thank you so much. Board Member Hay?
Uh, yes. In this particular case, uh, I, I could support, because, uh, Barbara Reedy, I've watched her over the years, and she's had, she has a passion, uh, for this board. But the, the other thing that I'm looking at here is that we have three openings on that board. And we have only one candidate listed. If we were to, uh, approve this, we would not be impeding anyone's position of getting on the board. So having said that, I support, uh, the, uh, the, uh, altering our, our policy and, and reappoint Barbara Reedy back to that board.
Commissioner Hay, I concur with your reasoning. I have evaluated the number of vacancies as well. Is that a motion from you?
Yes, uh, I saw move that we, uh, reappoint, uh, Barbara Reedy, uh, back to, uh, the, what is it? The Historic Resource Preservation Board.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from members of the board?
I, I just want to say that, um, I support, um, the board's, um, decision as well. I've gotten, um, an opportunity to speak to Barbara on, um, a couple of occasions, and she is someone who, if you don't know her, get to know her. She knows, um, everything that you could want to know about, um, our city, um, from where it came from to where it is and all the history. And, uh, she's an asset to our city and on that board.
I echo those sentiments. We have a motion before us to reappoint Barbara Reedy to the Historic Resources Preservation Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Reedy. Moving on to Item 5B, Annual Appointment and Reappointment of Eligible Members of the Community to Serve in Vacant Positions on City Advisory Board. Give me one moment to pull up my list.
Yeah.
We're gonna begin first with Building Board of Adjustments and Appeal. Uh, we have one applicant, Joe Joesman, and Commissioner Hay, I believe it is your nomination.
I saw move to appoint Joe Joesman.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Congratulations, uh, Mr. Joesman. You are now a member to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Uh, moving on to Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, we have numerous applicants. The first applicant is Purnell Davis, Gregory Hartman, Courtland McGuire, and Leisha Roundtree. Uh, Commissioner Hay, this is also your appointment.
Yes, I would like to appoint, uh, Purnell, uh, Davis to that position.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Purnell Davis to the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory We have a motion and a second to appoint Purnell Davis to the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Davis. Moving on to Education and Youth Advisory Board, we have no applicants. If anyone is interested, again, we have vacancies. Moving on to Historic Resources Preservation Board, we have one applicant, Rhonda Sexton. And Commissioner, hey, it is also your appointment.
That's a move. That's the form that we made.
The stars have aligned.
Yes.
Was that a motion?
Yes, that's motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Sexton. Moving on to Library Board, we have no applicants, but we do have several vacancies. Moving on to Planning and Development Board, we have one applicant, Thomas Remicchio. Vice Mayor Cruz, it is your appointment for an alternate position.
I'll go ahead and appoint Thomas Remicchio.
We have a motion to appoint Thomas Remicchio. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Remicchio. Moving on to Recreation and Parks Board, we have three applicants, Suzanne Dupont, Alexandria Lo Presto, Elizabeth Pierce Rowe, and also Commissioner, hey, I'm, I am correct. Commissioner, hey, again, it is your appointment.
Dupont.
Okay, for Suzanne Dupont, is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I just have a quick question, if I may.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
There's a current board member that's seeking reappointment. Do we not want to support the current board member being reappointed? Just curious.
Is there a second one, second?
The second on Dupont.
What I'm saying is there a second position, because I lost my screen.
From what I can see on the list, it was just, there's only one.
Then I I support what Vice Mayor just stated. I thought there were two. There's only one.
Okay.
So let's reappoint.
Elizabeth Pierce Rowe.
My screen went.
I'll show you my screen.
Show me your screen. Yes.
Elizabeth Pierce Rowe.
Elizabeth Pierce Rowe.
Okay, we have a motion for Elizabeth Pierce Rowe.
Reappointment.
And is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Pierce Rowe. Moving on to Senior Advisory Board, we have several vacancies, but we have no applicants. That concludes administrative. We will now proceed to consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of this commission would like to poll?
Andrew May, could I say you a minute?
Yep.
Okay. Last call, anything you'd like to poll? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to consent bids and purchases, is there any item that anyone would like to poll? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve consent bids and purchases.
So move.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Moving on to public hearing. At this point, I'd like to call in Mr. Serrano, our counsel, to swear in all relevant parties and also to describe this quasi judicial process.
Mr. Mayor, item.
A microphone, sir.
With your members of the commission, item eight A is a request to approve a major site plan modification to the Publix Distribution Center to allow the construction of a plus or minus five hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred fifty-eight square foot warehouse building expansion associated site improvements on a sixty-three point seven nine acre site located at fifty-five hundred Park Ridge Boulevard in the PID Planned Industrial Development Zoning District. The applicant is Randolph Barber Public Supermarkets, Inc. At this time, anybody who's intending to speak or give testimony in this application, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear you in at this time. Do you swear from the statements or testimony you give this evening should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll just go through briefly the process for quasi judicial. The, after I swear on the witnesses, which I just said, the applicant will go first and present his case and materials to the commission, all the backup, the staff memorandum, and the presentations of the applicant are already in the record and need to be formally presented into the record. They are considered in the record without objection. The applicant presents his case, his testimony, and all the facts to demonstrate whether it meets the qualifications and the requirements of the application. Once the applicant is done, you can ask questions of the applicant. If anything during their presentation, you know, it's up to you how you want to proceed, but it's probably best to let them go through their presentation and have your questions at the end. It'll allow the record to be clear. Once that concludes, city administration and city staff can present whatever they have to present on the application. Same thing with testimony and evidence and record if they have anything to present. Again, questions can be asked at that time once they conclude. Once the staff concludes, you would open up for public comment. Members of the public who want to give testimony can come in and they can give sworn testimony. If they're sworn, I'd ask that they indicate so when they speak. If they're, if not, then we presume to be unsworn. You can still hear from them. You just give different weight to sworn testimony. Once you hear from the public, you go in reverse order. You let the staff respond anything they might have heard, turn a public comment, and then finally wrap it up with the applicant, who gets to respond to anything they may have heard since they presented at the beginning. Once that's concluded, it turns over to the city commission for your discussion and deliberation on the application. So at this time, it would be appropriate to have the applicant come up and start their presentation.
All right, one second. Please do approach the podium. Mr. Serrano, you did speak very quickly, so I just want to summarize and make sure we're all on the same page. Applicant first, they're going to give their presentation. We're going to hear from staff. They're going to give their presentation. At the end of each of their presentations is an opportunity for members of the board to ask their questions. After both sides have presented, we will hear from the public. After public comments have concluded, we will resume back in reverse order. Staff again can address any points that they wish, the questions that have been asked by the commission, followed by the applicant again. After all of that is concluded, the commission will then deliberate and make a decision. Did I get that correctly, counsel?
That's correct.
Excellent. Sir, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Jamie Crowley from the Gunster Law Firm in West Palm Beach. It's my privilege to be here on behalf of Public Supermarkets tonight. We are requesting a major site plan modification for the existing warehouse facility located at fifty-five hundred Park Ridge Boulevard. The property is zoned PID and the future land use is DRI. Publix purchased this property in nineteen eighty-eight. So this whole area was part of a DRI. Could we go to the next slide, please? Was part of a DRI that was originally approved in nineteen eighty-four. Now, the development of regional impact process is not really utilized today, but at that time, developments of a certain threshold were reviewed by the local government, the county, the regional planning council, and the Department of Community Affairs in Tallahassee. That's now been renamed the DEO in Tallahassee. But all of the approvals that were obtained at that time, they reviewed the impacts of the potential development. So you had five hundred and forty acres that were rezoned to an industrial development park. And so all of the traffic intensities, all of the development potential was reviewed by all of those reviewing agencies at the time. So now we are requesting to expand the existing facility, which has been there since nineteen eighty-nine, to propose five hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-three square feet of expansion area, which will be used for storage of dry goods in the warehouse area. We are also proposing sixteen hundred square foot awning for tractor inspections, new ingress and egress point on the east side of the site, which will have a manned security post and an expansion of the parking lot south of the building. So we've been working very closely with staff since we originally came in last year, and we really wanted to make sure that we addressed all of the requirements of your code. We're not requesting any waivers. Everything in terms of parking, traffic, we are meeting your code requirements, and so we're not requesting any waivers for setbacks or any of the items in your code. We did receive a favorable recommendation from your staff, and we went to Planning and Development Board last month, and we also received a recommendation of approval from them. So with that introduction, I would like to introduce Jason Bamberger from Publix, who's going to talk a little bit more about the operation at the existing facility and why we're requesting what we're requesting this evening. Thank you very much.
Good day. Jason Bamberger, Public Supermarkets Director of Warehousing. Just first and foremost, thank you for listening to our project and appreciate your time this evening. So I want to talk about four things tonight, just some facts about the company, basically the history as far as coming to Boynton Beach, Florida, and then also just what this project will do to help the supply chain in addition to what the impacts of this project will be to the community. From a factual standpoint, we currently operate twelve hundred ninety-six retail stores within our operation. We employ over two hundred and thirty thousand associates company-wide. We are the largest employee-owned company in the country in addition to the fact that we have, for the past twenty-five years, been on the Fortune One Hundred's Best Companies to Work For. So we take pride in that and what we've done, you know, over the past twenty-five years for that. From a historical standpoint, talk about nineteen thirty, our founder, George W. Jenkins, founded Publix in Lakeland, Florida, opened his first store in Winter Haven, Florida. We'll fast forward a little bit to nineteen eighty-nine. We graciously approached the city of Boynton Beach, asking for approval to buy some property, build a warehouse. You welcomed us in. We became now a community member. We built our sixth distribution center in Boynton in nineteen eighty-nine. That current center is now, or was at this time, excuse me, operating seventy-eight stores of our three hundred and sixty-seven that we had at that point in time.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
If I may ask you for one moment, can I ask staff to please move the slides forward so it coincides with his presentation?
I can't see that far anyway, so I couldn't request it. My apologies.
No worries. I just want to make sure that the public is following along. Yes, thank you.
All right, so we'll fast forward again into twenty twenty-two, here again, asking for permission to expand our operation, but we are currently serving a hundred and forty-one stores out of our current twelve hundred ninety-six, just out of the Boynton Beach warehouse. So next slide. So some of the supply chain improvements, our goal is to become or to be the one that's providing the goal for your customer service to our communities and customers. We want to more effectively service our South Florida communities with the necessities or natural disasters, hurricanes. I mean, they're prevalent down here as just wells, central Florida, but the opportunity to store water, toilet paper, and be able to ship it to the retail stores in a timely fashion is paramount to having an expansion down here in Boynton. Some of the items that we're talking about are transported from Lakeland, and that really is a three-day turnaround. So the store orders it on a Monday, we select it in the warehouse on a Monday evening, maybe Tuesday morning, and then it's actually in the retail store on a Wednesday. So by having the Boynton expansion, that would enable us to have that basically within a twenty-four hour timeframe. So what are the impacts to the project? Well, as Jamie had mentioned, five hundred seventy-one thousand square foot addition, it's going to provide us the ability to more effectively serve the stores in the South Florida market with room for additional growth. But I think most importantly to the community, we'd like to add three hundred jobs to the Boynton Beach community. This would allow Publix to strengthen our supply chain with the additional dry warehousing or reduce fuel consumption. So as I mentioned earlier, we're traveling from Lakeland to Boynton Beach for relays. That diesel, that fuel consumption that we're doing, that will be reduced. We won't have the need to send twenty-five trailers down here a day to service the South Florida market. That would be cut, and we would only have to, you know, a fraction of that. We'd also, again, as I mentioned, increase job opportunities, and then lastly, the transportation time, cutting that down to a third of what we're looking at today and serving the community a little bit faster. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Josh Lockhart. He's our facilities engineer to describe more about the project.
Hey, good evening. For the record, Josh Lockhart, Senior Facilities Engineer for Public Supermarkets. Next slide. Oh, good. We're good. So just to reiterate what Jamie and Jason have described so far, our existing facility is at fifty-five hundred Park Ridge, just to the west of ninety-five, to the south of Boynton Beach Boulevard there. So you kind of see it on that aerial. Next slide, please. This is how the existing facility is set up. There's an entrance to the southwest portion of the property and the vacant field to the east of the existing warehouses where we are expanding the warehouse into. So that's going to push over to the east towards High Ridge Boulevard. Next slide, please. This is a rendering based on the site plan, so you can see how the new warehouses will be oriented next to the existing warehouse. So we also are proposing a new entrance off of High Ridge, and it will have actually be just an ingress and an egress for public trucks only there. So the ingress will be for vendor trucks, egress will be for public trucks only. So we are, you'll see the expanded associate parking lot on the south side there that due to the additional jobs, we are anticipating that this project will create these more parking for them there. So we've also got truck docks on both sides and some reorientation of the existing trailer staging area to the west side of the property just to better facilitate and kind of better queue up trailer storage on the property. Next slide. This is another rendering based on the landscape plan for the proposed project. So you can see the, in that rendering there, where the proposed open space is on the perimeter and up against the warehouse. We also are providing some landscape islands within the new associate parking area as well as increased vegetation, you know, increased amount of trees, shrubs, ground cover all the way through not only the new portion, the developed portion that is proposed, but also the existing to help provide different, you know, several layers of buffering from the frontages. Next slide, please. This slide provides renderings of the architectural elevations, and the top one is the north side. The middle one would be the south side, and the bottom one would be the west side. So we've kind of, these are kind of zoomed in on some of the more detailed areas of the building. It does kind of carry that theme throughout the elevations going forward, but it's kind of gives you the best detail there. So and we do have, I want to bring up, we do have several members of our professional design team here that if, you know, specific questions come up, they'll be able to answer those for you. Next slide, please. So this is a quick snip from the street. This is kind of at the southeast corner. It's kind of showing some of the raised berm that exists around the property now, as well as some of the mature vegetation. So we are maintaining this as best as possible around the existing perimeter of the property. Next slide, please. This is also the north side, kind of the north side of the existing warehouse. So it shows the the buffering that we have now to the north is kind of a very mature stand of vegetation there just to the north of our property line and going into the, actually with the city's own parcel with the pond there. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jamie and look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason and Josh. Once again, Jamie Crowley for the record. One thing I did want to mention was that as part of the original site plan process, and if I could go back to the third slide in the presentation, I'm sorry, I can't scroll back to it. The original site plan did contemplate a future expansion, and you can see on the right-hand side of that drawing, you can see how that it sort of bumps out, and there's a phased development plan there. So this expansion has been contemplated since the time of the original site plan approval. And once again, we worked really hard with your staff, and I did want to take a minute to thank your staff publicly because they were so great to work with, and they really helped us get through this project. And there were certain things that we had to work pretty hard to come up with solutions for, and they made this a better project. So I would like to thank them. And with that, I would answer any questions that you might have of us. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to questions and comments from members of the commission. Any questions at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, just to clarify, you said that this would bring three hundred new jobs to Boynton?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, is there is there a way for y'all to maybe market those jobs to people who live here in Boynton?
Yes, sir. Jason's. Yes, sir. Jason's going to come up and help answer that question.
Yes, so Jason Bamberger for the record. The marketing will happen here in Boynton. We already, as we currently already have our site here, it will just be for a different department name, but we will do local marketing in addition to community programs. We have our talent acquisitions team that would be more than willing to come into community centers and obviously have a conversation about the jobs that are available for the public.
Great. And, you know, obviously, these 300 jobs, they probably vary. What would, what's like the median salary or hourly rate of these jobs, ballpark? What kind of jobs are they? Can you elaborate more?
These jobs would be forklift operations, both internal to the operation and then loading, which would also be a forklift position, selecting or order picking, if you would, inventory positions, systems positions, and there may be a few spotter driver jobs or whatnot.
Awesome. And you said that we would mitigate some supply chain issues also with this plan modification. Is that correct?
Yes, we would. Obviously, having multiple warehouses set up within the state of Florida. So this particular expansion would be what we call our low-velocity product group, which is more of your batteries, your health and beauty care items. There are food products, but we only have one of these types of warehouses within the state of Florida. So this would enable us to have a second or a backup. So obviously, having two is better than having one in case of any supply chain opportunities in the future. But this would allow us to have more product on hand and potentially have more available to the public.
Right. So not only would this help the city of Boynton, this would also help the state of Florida?
Yes, sir.
That's great. You know, I just want to say for the record, I love Publix. You guys are great. Best sandwiches I've ever had. Anytime, you know, I'm digging through and hiring individuals, I always look and see if they, if they worked at Publix or they had a history at Publix, I always give them a call because their culture is great. You guys really know how to run a good organization. So, you know, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner. If I could just follow up on that, 300 jobs. Are you bringing any of your existing employees into this new, you know, project? Or are you saying all 300 are new jobs?
These would be all, 300 would be new jobs. Our culture is based on promote from within. So other associates would potentially have an opportunity to come down to Boynton. However, the likelihood of that is slim to none, just based on there won't be any type of programs or packages, if you would, for them to do so. So the, I would say the bulk of the associate count would be from here in Boynton Beach. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Boardman. Excuse me, Commissioner Kelly.
I have a question. You briefly spoke about, I guess, trailer traffic is my question and my concern. I know you said that this would kind of prevent or decrease the amount of trucks that have to come from Lakeland to bring product here. How then, by having this expansion here, how does that impact, if at all, or decrease the amount of trucks that are coming in and out? If the same trucks are, I guess, leaving to supply the stores, are you, are we going to see an increase of trucks? Are we going to see a decrease? Is it going to stay the same? What's your?
Well, there will be more deliveries made to the facility because we're having different product groups delivered. So there would be more trucks coming into the facility. The outbound side of things would remain fairly flat, the same. But there would be a slight increase out of that facility. The reduction in transportation would be from Lakeland to Boynton Beach.
Okay. So how many, did you have an estimate of how many?
I don't. None of this time. I don't have that here.
I'm sorry. We have a question from staff.
Mayor just wanted to point out Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager of Public Services. Just to let you know that there is a current project that the county is doing on Gateway Bridge that will increase the capacity of the dual left lanes that's coming onto High Ridge. So we fully support that. That's something that will help decrease traffic times on the overpass because I did, we did have a concern about that, but knowing that that project's coming in, the receiving lane, that should mitigate any concerns that you would have with increased truck traffic.
That is good to hear.
Thank you.
Do you have a time like this, one before the other? Any idea?
Well, the project is currently under construction. If you've been out to the police department, and they've been dealing with the construction for quite a bit. The county has removed the previous contractor and has a new contractor that's working. They've been working for the last several months, so we have seen an increase in the construction. So hopefully, we're hoping that that project will be completed very shortly.
Good.
Vice Mayor Cruz, you have any questions?
Yes, a comment and then a question to follow up. First of all, thank you for being a part of our community. We're really happy to see 300 jobs being created in Boynton Beach. That really makes me happy. And it also makes me happy to see potentially a faster turnaround for deliveries to other localities and also in case of emergencies, you mentioned you're going to have lots of batteries there. I'm thinking hurricane season. It's all positives for me. My only question would be, when is the expected completion of this project?
I think they want to get started as soon, as soon as we can get our permit drawings done and get approval. So they're ready to rock and roll as soon as we can get approved. And what is the, what is the timing of the constructions?
Jason Bamberger again. So the timing is, obviously, we're waiting on your approval. Ready to start putting shovels in the ground today, but we estimate late third quarter, early fourth quarter next year completion.
Thank you.
All right. For now, I only have one question or comment, which is, I see the roof, and it is an incredible amount of surface area. Do you have any plans to make use of that space possibly for solar panels? Any plans in the works or possibilities for the future?
Josh Lockhart, for the record, at this time, we do not. It is a white membrane roof, so it does provide a lot of reflectivity. We don't utilize any kind of solar in our facilities right now because it does tend to create roof leaks. So we haven't figured that one out yet. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now I'd like to proceed to staff presentation. And Mr. Mack, will that be you or Ms. Radigan? All right.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The information included in staff's presentation was presented by the applicant, but we are available for questions if needed.
Oh, all right. I was under the impression you had a presentation.
We do, but it would be things that you already heard. It would be redundant.
Okay. Compliance with code. Please address that.
The project as proposed is meeting current code along with the recommendations for the conditions of approval. So the current project plus the conditions of approval will give you code compliance.
Okay. And any of those items you, for the conditions of approval, anything unrealistic or not something that can be completed within a reasonable amount of time?
I would say everything is realistic. There is one item. It's condition number 18 that will depend on commission approval. They are working with our legal team to create a landscape buffer easement since the project does a butt city property where the lake and the landscaping is currently situated. And we would like to make use of that buffer to count for the buffer that is required for this project. That will be in front of you under a consent item in the future. They are working, the applicants working to create the exhibits for that item.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff from members of the commission?
Yes, just one other one. The original plan did not have an east entrance. It didn't include an east entrance. How would this impact the existing buildings that are there?
You mean in the adjacent neighborhood?
Yeah.
We don't think that they're going to negatively impact those buildings. We think that there's sufficient traffic volume on that road to accommodate what we're proposing.
You communicated and talked with them surrounding?
We've notified everyone in the surrounding area. And in fact, if you look at the site plan, we've really overcompensated on the stacking as the trucks come in. So what we really want to make sure is there's no overflow of trucks out into the right of way. And we've done that by basically creating three triple stacked lanes coming in and controlling traffic in that way. So we've really thought about it carefully as to how we can manage that traffic without negatively impacting the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to staff or to the applicant? If not, we're going to proceed to public comment. Thank you so much, both of you. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, as always, you have three minutes. Approach the podium and begin when you are ready.
Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest Second Street. First, I was curious if the workers at the warehouse are also eligible to buy public stock? Are they part of the overall family? And then this double, doubling the warehouse size, obviously, to me, would be doubling the amount of traffic. But I don't think that should be really a consideration because Publix was here before anybody else was, and they adhere to the original purpose of Quantum Park as industrial. So, you know, I think that if there's any extra traffic, it's their due. And if I remember correctly, there used to be a railroad spur going through this area. And does that mean that railroad never took off? That never worked out? And then the solar panels mentioned by the mayor, I think that's an excellent idea, but might be too late on something like this. But that's something I really think the city should look more at the carbon neutral stuff, and that'd be a place to start. Finally, the, about several hundred yards to the north, there's the bald eagle's nest in the area that I, that was given to the Russian oligarch. And I don't know how this will impact, but I believe they're in their right to build it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? Please approach the podium. Begin when you are ready.
Cindy Valca de Carrado. I just was wondering, are you going to have like a time set, like being off hours? Again, I know that they're saying there's not going to be any problem with the police department right there because I know to get onto Gateway. So I don't know if you were scheduling for deliveries, maybe like 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning or different off-ute times in the regular traffic patterns, if you thought about that. That's like my only concern there, and I really think that it's great if we can get 300 employees, Boynton Beach people working. That would be totally awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, approach the podium.
Hi, Barbara Reidy. I'm just curious, since this is a major site plan modification, are they going to include an art feature or are they just going to pay the fee? That's all. I'm just curious about that.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other in-person public speakers? Please approach the podium now.
Hi, Ernest Mingoli, 710 Northeast Seventh Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach. I'm a resident homeowner here for over a year and a half. Publix helped me with vaccinations when I came here from New York, New Jersey area. Very important. I like shopping there. But I'll talk now about what I think about almost a 600,000-square-foot warehouse. I don't know if people can imagine how big that is. And if you can imagine, how many diesel trucks it's going to take to fill that and then distribute it? So anybody who lives within a quarter mile or half a mile of that place, their air quality is going to be destroyed. Now, I would ask Publix right now, somebody mentioned it, but they're not going to tell you how many trucks in and out. It's going to be 24 hours. And you know, everybody's blaming everything on COVID now and distribution. Publix has been fine. This thing is nothing more than making it sound like to you 300 jobs. But watch what it takes in terms of a toll on the traffic pollution. Just problem after problem. And I don't really care, but Publix gets a little too involved in politics, if you know what I mean. I mean, Vice Mayor, your stuff is always around Publix. And all you guys, you swear that, you know, Publix only supports you, like the District 3 lady, you know, with bar and whatever, all around the Publix, right on their property. I'm saying, you're not supposed to do that. Well, you know, it's kind of connected, you know what I mean? And just like the Vice Mayor, just so that you know, all these things you're getting approved, where all these people are dying on the highway with all this traffic. You say, oh, you know, it's not, it's not a problem. Well, I mean, who just died on the highway because of your Dunkin' Donuts backup and all these chicken places that you put your sign on? Now you got deaths. So if you think a 600,000-square-foot warehouse with diesel trucks is not going to have a major impact on air quality, there's something wrong. And traffic, and not only that, a lot of schools in Boynton Beach are near highways, and these kids are sucking in all this pollution. And no matter what we say to you, pollution, unhealthy food, you think everything's funny, and you just keep approving everything. That's why we're having trouble breathing here. But you don't care. The mayor laughs. He gets a lot of political payoffs.
Last call. Go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Chrissy Ward, Lifetime Resident. I think it's a great idea, not just for jobs, but also the fact that Publix is like a household name is something. My brother got his first job at Publix and had stock in it and everything. So I think it's really good. And yes, it's been on High Ridge. That's where we used to go back in the day and play and just be around. But I think it's a great opportunity. As far as what I know is, when it comes to different trucks coming in, I used to work for FedEx, so therefore I will only see our trucks coming at like a early, early morning time. And then if it does, it comes at late, late night. So it's not where it's too much traffic and everything like that because, you know, when it's coming from different areas, they do try to make sure that it's more feasible, that the trucks get there at a decent hour where we're up maybe like at 2:00 or 4:00 o'clock where we're selecting, we're doing things for them. So I think that's going to be a big, great thing for us. Also, we just have to give them an opportunity. I mean, if there is the space, we get in jobs, and it gives people an opportunity to get into this building, their household name, faith in Florida, all these different things. It's a good thing. We can sit here and focus on the negative, but let's try to move forward in the positives. I see a lot of positive things out of this, and so kudos, dude.
Thank you. We're going to now move on to, all right, we'll have time. Any virtual speakers? Mr. McNally, do we have anybody online?
Mayor Conserga, there are no virtual hands raised at this moment.
All right, then that closes public comments. At this point in the procedure, we'd like to hear from staff. Staff, if there's anything that you would like to address from anything that had been brought up, now would be the time or questions from members of the commission.
I did, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
This, just so I understand, because maybe I missed this, this was approved by P and D, our P and D board?
Staff, applicant? Yes, Jamie Crowley, for the record, we were there last month, and we got a unanimous approval from them. And if you would like me to respond to any of the, any of the public comments, I'd be happy to do that as well if it's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. This is the perfect time to address any of those comments. So with respect to traffic again, I apologize, our traffic engineer cannot be here tonight, but we have submitted our traffic documents. And one of the conditions of approval is a traffic statement from our traffic engineer that is satisfactory to your staff. So because this was a DRI approval, ordinarily, when you come through this process, Palm Beach County has to issue you a letter saying that there's capacity on the roadway for your project. That was, that all took place at the time of the original approvals for the DRI. So everything that's been built since 1989 was built with the understanding that this was going to be built at maximum capacity. So the roadway improvements that are happening right now, they were funded oftentimes 10, 20 years ago, and it just takes that long to get these projects approved. So this has, this has been well thought out. It's been well played. And I apologize that our traffic engineer cannot be here, but we will be submitting that report to staff, and they will have an opportunity to review it. With respect to the environmental issues to the north, we have done an environmental survey, and we're going to do whatever we need to do to cover that area. With respect to the solar panels, we might not be doing that now, but we have taken great With respect to the solar panels, we might not be doing that now, but we have taken great steps to make a large warehouse and to retrofit that to meet your sustainability ordinance, which is not easy to do. And so we, it took us a lot of time and effort to take. And when you look at your sustainability ordinance, you have residential and you have commercial buildings, there's no carve out for industrial. So we have a large warehouse building and and our team did a great job and your staff did a great job of coming up with solutions. And and you know, one thing that I would like to point out is Publix's recycling program is unbelievable. And so part of what this facility is going to do is every time I go to the store, I take old bags or plastic things that my kids have and you can recycle them, you take them. Publix takes all that stuff. It's going to come to a facility like this where it's actually recycled and it doesn't end up in a landfill. So we might not be able to do everything that we would like to do because of the nature of this operation, but we are meeting your code with respect to the sustainability. With respect to the art in public places, we are making the donation and we are providing the art because this is a secure, private facility and really no one would see it if it were back there. So we think that that could be better used elsewhere in the city. And I think that's all the questions.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Cruz, did you have any questions or comments?
Well, just wanted to let you guys know, we're happy to have you or I'm happy to have you personally. My only question would be, what are the hours of operation for that expanded part of the facility?
Jason Mayberg, for the record, it'd be a 24/7 operation. So start of shift would be somewhere in the ballpark of 4:00 AM in five days a week. And then the start of second shift would be 4:00 PM.
My only concern is the thought of neighboring like nearby neighborhoods and having the beep, 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 beep of the trucks at four in the morning. That's the only thing that I could think about, but you guys have presented such a great proposal that I'm I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. At this point, I'd like to say that in terms of the solar panel, I understand it's not something you're working on now. But I do hope that you will continue to work with our staff. Perhaps that could be a future project. You know, if we can lead in Boynton Beach, this would be a great opportunity. When I look at that roof surface area, it is a wasted space and there could be an opportunity there. So again, I just hope it is something that we will continue to talk about and work on in the future. The the questions about the jobs have already been addressed. Thank you for that. And as it relates to marketing and job fair, I also hope that you will work with our staff to host our marketing and job fair locally to give our residents that leg up so they can be first in the line. Related to that, on a lighter note, Commissioner Turkin, you had mentioned this, I am also a fan of Pub Subs. So I see two thumbs. Thank you so much. That is it for my questions. You have addressed many points, but I see you'd like to add a few more things.
Just one more thing in terms of the EV charging stations that we added. I don't know the number off Max. Do you know the 12 12 EV charging station? So it's a start. We have none now and you know, we're we're going in that direction and we're we're doing everything we can to meet your sustainability ordinance and we'll continue that conversation.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Any other final questions or comments from members of the board?
I just have one question case or one comment in case you wanted to know.
Yes.
Because I purchased one for my son, you can actually buy a Publix sweatshirt and they have merchandise and it says Pub Subs and cookies and so anyway, now and I feel like Publix and the staff have worked really hard to make this project the best it could be for the city and for Publix. And so I just thank you for working so hard with city staff to to make sure that, you know, every T was crossed and every I was dotted and that you know, that this is a project that will benefit the, you know, the city as far as jobs and and sustainability goes. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with your staff. I'm also aware that you have a partnership with Feeding South Florida, which is your neighbor right across the street. So thank you so much for that because Feeding South Florida is doing a lot for our community. So thank you for that partnership. That concludes my questions and comments.
Motion to approve, if I may.
We have a motion to approve item 8A. Counsel, is that sufficient or do we need to be more explicit with the motion?
No, I didn't. That's implicit in that motion is with all staff conditions.
All right, with all staff.
With all staff conditions.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8B, this item is currently tabled. We received a letter from the applicant's attorney to request to continue to table this item. As such, no action is necessary. Is that correct, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, if you want to just confirm the request, you could just further table it to June 21st. It will be renoticed regardless. But just to make the record, you could
Just for the purpose of the record, request for a motion to
Further table it.
We have a motion to further table to what date?
June 21st.
June 21st. And we have a second from Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, the item is further tabled. Moving on to City Manager's Report, there are none unfinished business. There are none. Now we will proceed with new business starting with 11A Commission Discussion Regarding Potential Height Limitations requested by Commissioner Turkin. Commissioner Turkin, this was your item?
Yep. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. All right. So I mentioned this at the last meeting. When I was campaigning, I heard a lot about what happened over at Riverwalk and how, you know, there was you know, the exception made for height. You know, I know there's a lot of issues with this in terms of planning with the CRA plan. But you know, my concern is, you know, like some people mentioned today, we're so focused on building up and we're not focused on what we have now and our infrastructure now. And you know, from our strategic workshop, you know, a few weeks ago, and we all collectively decided that we would focus away from high density. You know, someone said earlier that you know, we don't need to be a high city or a tall city in order to be successful. I mean, if you look to the south of us, you see Delray, Delray's made leaps and bounds, you know, over the last 10 years. And they're not a tall city. I think four, four stories, maybe 35 feet, 40 feet. I'm not 100% sure. I think Jupiter is 50 feet. You know, I just don't. I don't think that you know, focusing on density is the solution. You know, and I'm going to represent my constituents. And I'd like to see, you know, what staff can provide and what we can do to set a height limitation today.
All right. Staff, perhaps Mr. Temple or Mr. Mack, do you have any items to add on this on this matter?
Good evening, Amanda Rattigan, Planning Director. Mr. McNally, if you could please pull up the presentation. Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, we did prepare some, a presentation, a short presentation to go over. I'm sorry, can you hear me well? Is that better? Some historical information, just to make sure the facts are clear. How we've changed height over the past and options for for moving forward. We are looking for clarity and direction from you all at the end of this presentation. Next slide, please. So historically, height had started in about the year 2000. We started public workshops that we held for the Federal Highway Redevelopment Plan. That plan was adopted the following year in 2001. And 2002, there was an LDR update that implemented the plans recommendations that was adopted the previous year. This was the first introduction of height of 150 feet. So the 150 feet height maximum has been within the LDR recommendations for about 20 years now. Previous to this, height limitations were at 100 and that was concentrated in the core downtown area as we know it today. Next slide.
So what happened? What happened before 2000?
So as I just said, before 2000, the height limitation was 100 feet. And that was concentrated in the downtown area and was associated with the zoning district CBD, which is currently being phased out and replaced with mixed use. So the next slide, you have the the following update. All of the updates after this time, since 20 years ago, have been about incremental steps and dispersing height and density throughout the city. So the limitations were set 20 years ago and plans were done since then that helped us shape where and how height is is now understood. So in 2004, there was an LDR update which adopted SMU. This created another step. So from 150, we created the suburban mixed use districts which have height limitations by right of 55 feet and some conditional use allowance for up to 75 feet. Next slide. In 2006, the Boynton Beach Corridor Plan expanded the mixed use districts along Boynton Beach Boulevard East. So that is from 95 to federal. Next slide. So in 2005, there was an update to the Federal Highway Corridor Plan. The workshop started in 2005. The adoption was in 2006 and in the same year, 2006 was the very similar scheme to we have today. It was the adoption of M U L 1, 2, and 3. And this was by the recommendation of that plan. Next slide. So that brings us to 2016, which is the current version of the CRA plan. This plan was essentially a consolidation of all of the other plans that lived before it. It essentially took the recommendations for Boynton Beach, for the downtown and for all the other districts within the CRA and put them in one place. There was very little changes adopted through this plan. The only change that had to do with height was the addition of MU4. And that created a level between our MU3 and our MU Core for another dispersment level. Next slide. So and this is just some basic information. The way height is measured right now is from the lowest point on the property line. And it goes depending on the architecture of the building. If it is a flat roof, it goes to the flat roof. If it has a parapet, it still goes to the flat roof and allows for a parapet of five feet. For a mansard roof, it goes between the even the ridge, which are the two, the two elements that you see as the roof. And for a gable or hip roof, it would go to the median. The code also allows for a height exception. We do not have a height variance. And in height exception is only permitted for non habitable heights. It means no extra floors. It means no extra units. It means that this is specifically for architectural enhancements. Things that further sustainability efforts that would go on the roof, access. And that's really it. That so we do have height exceptions, but they are very limited in scope. Next slide. Oh, this slide. Thank you. So this is, so sorry. Yes, thank you. This is the right one. So zoning, the zoning districts do have the heights within them. This is what it looks like. Overall, single family is limited to about 30 feet. Our non residential is about to 45 feet. And our mixed use ranges from 55 feet to 150 feet. Next slide. So here we created these diagrams so you guys could see height on a map. Everything that's in that green color is less than 55 feet. Next slide. So to zoom in a little bit, again, everything in green is the less than 55 feet. We have a couple of parcels in that dark green that are that go to 55, I'm sorry, 65. And then we have yellow parcels that go to
75.
Thank you. I'm reading a small, small fine print. And then we have the orange that goes to 100 and then we have red that goes to 150. These are all by right. Next slide. So if you could just go back and forth between these two slides for a second, John McNally. So what this shows are possible changes to zone and code that would allow additional height. So this is really an overlay of the CRA where more height may be added and is recommended. So it's essentially in three areas. Just south of the core, you see something that goes from green to yellow. That means that the recommendation is to go from under 55 to 75. You see the addition of yellow blocks between Town Square and the approved villages. And then you see 75 on the north side of Boynton. And then at the Woolbright intersection, you see the addition of two blocks going from 55, which is the green to orange, which is the 100. Thank you, John. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this diagram is showing you all of the approved, developed or under construction projects. Everything in black is already vested under their projects. So you are essentially talking about one red block, so 150 block. That block is within the control of the CRA. That is our 115 project. And then you have one block between Town Square and the villages that would be able to be intense intensified in heightened density. And you have the northern blocks of Boynton Beach Boulevard, that is that same condition. And then one block at Woolbright and Federal, the one that's showing in orange, that may redevelop. That is currently a Publix Plaza, that's Sunshine Square. It may not happen in our lifetime, but it may redevelop because because it's a shopping center and I that may be. That's really the only additional heights that are currently proposed in the CRA plan. Next slide. So how we change, historically, how we change height has been through three or four steps. First, it's public workshops, either citywide or district wide. Second is the update of a visioning plan or the CRA plan. And then next, it's the implementing plans. It's changes to our comp plan if needed and then changes to the LDR if needed. Next slide. There are some legal considerations that I will allow Mike Sorillo to review.
That's my cue. Evening. So when you're talking about changing regulations, these are, these are really this, the legal issues that you look at any time you look at changing or regulations. Is it going to have any impact on existing legal uses and possibly create nonconforming uses? If it's a nonconforming use means it can stay, it's legal, but if something were to happen to it, it would could not be rebuilt to it would have to be rebuilt to the new code. So that can affect how people view their rights and their uses. Does it have an impact on approved projects? Obviously, if something's been approved, they've got all the thumbs up from the city. And you typically would not be changing approved projects. Impact on projects under review. Similar type thing, if it's in the pipeline, they came in on a certain sort of rules, it's very hard and very rare that you can change those rules midstream on folks. If they're in the system and they've got full applications and they're going through the process. And finally, you look at ones, for example, the public shopping center, which does isn't really in for redevelopment, but does it have any impact on the current development rights, regardless of the current use that could be affected if you were to change something there? Could they come and say, you know, within timeframes, hey, you took something from me, you took some development rights from me? Those are all things we look at and we look at that when we change these codes, those are all things that are considered. But I just wanted to put those on there because they don't just apply to height. Those are general things we'd look at anytime we work with staff to look at changes in the zoning code or comprehensive plan.
Hey, Mike, I got a question for you. What research did you and what research does your staff looking into other municipalities, like I had requested when I proposed this? Did you guys talk with anything?
As far as what other municipalities provide?
They have done to restrict height, like Delray?
I've looked at the code that you provided for Delray. I was going to work with staff to do a survey and what the other ones do. We didn't do a survey myself of what the other codes.
You know, I asked at the last commission meeting to present this. And what I'm seeing is that I'm seeing a one sided presentation, to be frank with you. You know, I requested, you know, reach out to other municipalities. I don't see anything in this PowerPoint about that.
Mr. Turkin, we're happy to bring back additional information from other municipalities. This was really just meant to lay out the facts and currently and historically how height has been dealt in the city, but we're happy to
And and you and I have already went over this maybe a month ago prior and I brought it up at a commission meeting for this to be presented and it's a commission meeting for this to be presented and it's not here. So I'm a little bit concerned. Why are we seeing a one-sided presentation? You know, it's raising a lot of questions amongst the community. Um, and so I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a little bit upset that we're only getting one sided story. Um, you know, and we didn't, we didn't see anything. There's no, there's nothing here about what other municipalities did.
I, I, I would just like to say that we, we did talk about it, Commissioner Turk, and we thought this was an opportunity to bring the same information that we had the opportunity to talk about to the rest of the commission. We are again, happy to bring back any more detailed information through the consensus of the commission.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to support Commissioner Turk and say I would like to see information from other cities. I see that that is a discussion you've already had and I would like to see that in an upcoming meeting. I also want to add that this is my first time seeing this presentation. I did not see it attached to the agenda. I have not had time to review this information. So it's a bit difficult for me to intelligently have a conversation about it. So what I will say for now is, um, thank you for your time, but I'd like to see an update when it is available.
Could you, um, just for clarification, what type of information would you like to see from other jurisdictions? It's a little bit, um, hard to talk about just height in a, in a box. So would you like to see, um, density planning methodology, height of other cities?
I would like to, yes, yes. From other municipalities, you can look at Delray, you can look at Jupiter.
Us to limit it to Palm Beach County? Would you like us to do a best practices?
I think Palm Beach County would be more relative.
Perfect.
You know, we're Boynton Beach. We're Boynton Beach. We're not, you know, we're not New York City. We don't need to look into what New York City is doing.
That you will get exactly what you're looking for next time. So if there's any other feedback you'd like to provide, we'd be happy to take notice.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Okay. Um, with the legal part of the presentation, I just saw a few bullet points. I didn't see any case law. I didn't see any actual research. I didn't see any, um, you know, thinking of, uh, from a legal perspective, you know, we have federal law, we have state law, and then we have local ordinances. I would love to see what relevant statutes or regulations, um, manage the, the height as well as the density and what power or authority could a municipal, body really have on that, um, not only for our knowledge, but also for the public knowledge. I think that would be beneficial along, again, with some case law, if there's any, um, I think that would be much better.
Absolutely. We're, we're glad to work with, uh, with our legal team on this.
Yes, absolutely. We can get on that.
And this needs to be an objective presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay.
Yeah, I, I would like to, um, illegal to expand a little more on, um, we already have some guidelines on the book and the impact, negative and positive. You know, you, you, you went over a few lines, but I want, I want to know like, you know, that in certain areas, that ship is already sailed. I mean, we have existing buildings. And if you go and try to start restricting, when they meet our code, what is the impact? You know, uh, yeah, I just want to get a little more in depth of, uh, the, the what ifs, uh, do's and don'ts that we can do, what we, we can't do. You, does that make sense to you?
Yes, Commissioner, it does. We can get on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
What, what I'm just trying to point out is other municipalities have done it. It has been done. So it's not a matter of if we can or can't, it's how. We need to figure out how, you know, maybe I misconstrued that. Um, but it's how can we get this done? You know, keeping everybody in mind. I understand property rights, Mike, we went over that. I understand approved projects. We don't want to take that away from anybody, you know, or projects in the pipeline. I understand that. What I'm frustrated with is that it's, it's been done. It has been done. So I don't want to hear it can't be done or, you know, I don't want to get run around.
My, my point is we're not going to be a Delray. We're not going to be a West Palm or Boca. So I want to look at us being what we can be and looking a little more in depth, uh, as to, uh, the what ifs. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
All right. Any other comments from the, from the commission?
I guess.
Vice Mayor Cruz, go ahead.
While we're at it, um, the height sometimes could theoretically speaking affect density. And then we do have, um, the different types of zoning, which determine density. Um, so including that in the presentation is seeing if we could change density in any way, or if we even have that jurisdiction or that ability would be just good to learn.
The only thing I would like to add to that is in addition to looking at what other cities are doing, in addition to what are some possibilities, legal implications, I want to hear the pros and cons, uh, of this issue. So if this were to happen, what would that mean? Uh, and how that may or may not cascade into other issues and touches on them. So I, if you could include that in your presentation, that would be helpful for me to assess, uh, A, to know what are the different directions that we can take, but be what each of those directions could mean, uh, for the city. Commissioner Kelly, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I, um, thank you, Commissioner Turk, and for bringing this up. I think that it's something that we, um, don't necessarily, um, you know, we think about it on a case by case basis, but when you're looking at how it affects the, um, the entire city and the view of the city, um, I think it's important to look at. And so thank you for bringing this up. Um, it's, this is all new information that I'm seeing as well. So, um, I'm on the mayor's, um, you know, on his point that this is information that is helpful to us, but we need more. Um, we need to know, just like the mayor said, the pros and cons and how it may, by making changes, how it affects it, by not making changes, how it affects it, um, to, to really make, I, I feel like to have a really good conversation and something that is, is helpful to everyone. So thank you for bringing this information forward. Um, but we need, we need more, um, information so that we can, uh,
Right. That's, that was the point of this, uh, today, right? So let's, I guess let's try again.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Thank you for the, the clarity and the direction. We will bring forward, um, a lot more information. These are, as you expect, very loaded topics, um, with lots and lots of variables. So we will do our best to bring together some possibilities and associated positives and negatives.
And can we, thank you very much. Um, can we also, can we, the public comment? Can we have a public comment on this?
Um, one second. Yes. Uh, Commissioner Kelly, let's address yours first.
I had just one suggestion that maybe because this is, um, I see this becoming a, um, it's going to be a very informed, long, don't want to be rushed. I'm wondering if we should consider the possibility of almost a workshop setting where we're not doing this in a commission meeting at nine 45 at night where we're, you know, where we can really delve into it and focus on it and talk it out. Um, I, that's, I, that, it just popped into my head that this would be an ideal kind of workshop thing where we're not just doing it on a commission night, but that's just my thought.
Commissioner Kelly, I would support that. I think this issue could be sufficiently complex, uh, that it would warrant a workshop. And in order for us to have a meaningful conversation, we really need to do a lot of background research, a lot of diving into the material. So I would support a request for a workshop. Um, I had a question, uh, to counsel. My understanding, a motion and a second needed to be made for public comment. However, there is no motion before us. Can we still proceed with public comment?
It's your prerogative. You can hear from the public if you want to hear from the public.
Well, I would be open to that as well. Uh, while staff is up in the podium, any other questions or comments while staff is here?
No, no, thank, thank you for this. Um, please just try again. Adam, I'll be reaching out to you.
Then, thank you. Thank you. Um, as always, you have three minutes. Please approach the podium. We'll begin with in person first, then the virtual speakers. Um, go ahead.
How you doing? Sorry, I'm tired like everybody else. Um, the, uh, what nobody's bringing up also is the environmental impact of the height. Um, Boynton Beach is closer to the Gulf Stream than anywhere in the state of Florida and anywhere in the United States. Okay. So we have birds that only live here that migrate in and out. Jupiter caught on to this. Delray caught on it. They have a 35 foot height moratorium in Delray. Uh, Jupiter's, I think, I believe it's 50 feet. And what happens is these birds only live here at anywhere in the United States. I think you really need to look into it and they migrate back and forth. They also come off the ocean. They perch, they land in the trees. When you put build, buildings in between them, they can't go from one place or another. So you're, you're putting stuff that's already in the endangered species li- uh, list, you're basically the last one to kill it off. Um, and as for the St. Joseph property, that's adjacent to the scrub and that has the largest breeding population of burrowing owls. And they come across and then they perch and go all over the school. Um, so I think when you start putting these high buildings between the last spots that we have things living in Boynton Beach, you're disrupting their flow, their, you know, their way of life. And I think you need to take that into consideration. Um, and I also noticed some of the things when she changed it to the yellow stuff that were up in, in, uh, in the air to go up to 150 feet. Those are also pieces of property that the ex, ex vice mayor bought property on and the other mayor, uh, whatever his name is, Katz. So to me, that they even had that in mind to go up that high and bought property there raises another red flag. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Moving on to the next speaker, please approach the podium. Begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Kristy Ward, um, Boynton Beach resident. Um, I do have a, um, I do agree with my constituents here that we also need to look into things. It, it, this is like, I, if it's brought up on last meeting, I feel like I, when we come in here, that we should be like really organized as to, we should be asking ourselves questions to make sure that these questions are being, um, are being discussed and being addressed when we get here. We have to be a little bit more, um, organized. Um, far as this workshop setting goes, would this workshop setting be at a time and a place when like more and more people are able to be there and not at a time where we're not able to get feedback and information that is necessary? Cause you might be thinking one thing, but I love the fact that, um, he brought up a lot of different points that we have to bring, that we have to take in consideration, the environment and everything like that. I think we kind of need to like broaden the, the, the perspective instead of just looking at it from, from one perspective far as like profit, money and things like that. We need to really start looking into these things because I know we want to do great things, but we have some stuff here that we still haven't, um, like used or nobody's there. So it's this workshop. I really want to know when is this workshop going down? Because like, we need all hands on deck and it just can't be one person's perspective. It has to be like, um, a camaraderie together so we can move forward and then say, okay, what is good and what is not good? And then work with what we already have and stop. I think sometimes like we, we put in different codes so we can break old for other things. So I don't know. So let's try to just figure that out.
Thank you. Ms. Reedy?
Barbara Reedy.
Microphone, please.
Is that better?
Yes.
Um, I have to tell you that as a citizen, I have attended every charrette, every opportunity for public input, every workshop, everything from EDA down to downtown master plan steering committee to the CRA citizen input committee. And it's laughable that it was called public input. Those were presentations. We weren't given an opportunity to provide public input. We packed chambers fighting Riverwalk. I mean, there wasn't an empty seat in the house fighting Riverwalk. The public was screaming, we do not want this. And it was done anyways. So I'm happy to see that the, um, public is being listened to and you're talking about this tonight. And, um, when your workshop is, I'll be there.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Cindy Falca de Carrado. I attended many of those workshops prior to COVID and I thought we had settled on all these things at that time. Uh, we had the CRA working with us. We had the, um, Debbie from the art culture. We, we, we did multiple, multiple, um, workshops, which is, I still think is a great idea. You do need to have the people's input because we live here. We pay our tax dollars here and this is part of our community. But I was very disappointed to see even the building that they put where the Windexy was, they didn't do it to form. They were supposed to leave it archways open. They were going to build a restaurant off to the one of the sides toward the back patio. They were going to put benches along the way so that we in Boynton Beach could actually walk through it and enjoy the boats that pass by. That's how it was presented to us. That's not what happened. So I'm feeling a little bit, you know, skeptical because we come together, we spend our time, we invest our ideas, we agreed on these things, and then it doesn't happen in behind our backs. Something else transpires. I hope that with these meetings that you do hear the people, that you do implement what the people have shared, that will fit in with the community and with the ideas of everybody else, but that behind our backs, it's not changed. And when the building's up, like two people already died over there. I believe the crane fell on them. Uh, there's no open pass with passageway. We can't enjoy the intercoastals. Might as well put a Windexy back there for all we care. We don't get to enjoy any of it. So I don't like faults or pretenses. Let's be transparent. Let's be open and let's do what we say that we agree upon. I think then you'll find better trust with the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest Second Street. Um, I agree with what Barbara Reedy said, but I think a lot of the problem was, is that it was the quality of the city commissioners who were setting the tone, who wanted to go up like Mayor Roning, Mayor Jerry Taylor, and, uh, a lot of other, uh, city commissioners. So it's not really, staff isn't the bad people here. They're just, they're doing, they were getting their marching orders. And if you are a different commission who actually wants this kind of citizen input, then, then it'll happen and staff will go along with that because there, they'll do what you instruct them to. So, um, I hope this works out. I'm kind of optimistic. Unusual for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Uh, last call for public input speakers. Please approach the podium.
Ernest Mingoli, um, 710 Northeast Seventh Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach, 33435, also known as Harbor Hall Inlet One, a building that may be like Surfside, but I have to live there while this smiling lawyer, interim city manager, interim fire chief, interim everybody laughs and thinks it's funny that we have to live in fear. Think it's a joke. And now you mess around, you see at Riverwalk, people died. And you see the news when they interviewed at the scene. I was there. I've been, I was reporting for months that the workers there were drinking alcohol, throwing whiskey and tequila bottles all over at lunch and getting on the equipment. And then I'm a few blocks away and that happened and I went right there. And guess what? The fire chief or battalion chief showed up, a police officer showed up in charge of the, the two deaths and says, uh, we don't think we should do a drug or an alcohol test on the crane operator. He looks fine to us. And OSHA and that big cover up. That big cover up and look at some of the people on this commission, all their political signs around there. This thing was such a big payoff and two people dead. And where are all the people you're going to hire from, from Boynton Beach? From West Palm Beach, where everybody comes from. Every time you make these statements with this law firm, oh, we're going to hire everybody from Boynton Beach. You don't hire anybody. All your developers, all your lawyers, all your, everybody's from Fort Lauderdale or somewhere else. And it just keeps going and going. And how you get away with this? Nobody knows. You should be sued so, so severely for those two deaths there because this building department is so remiss. They don't show up. They don't inspect. They're like this. They're hanging out in bars and stuff. Really? You don't think so? Go in butcher bar and see how many city officials are doing business in there. Some of you right sitting here. You know who I'm talking about, right? Right? And who had their political office in butcher? And who had their political office in Butcher Bar? And where's the vice mayor? Where is she? She had her office in there, that political team, right? That loser from the bar? With this mayor and that city vice mayor in that restaurant? All the political stuff, what your political signs, all around Publix, all around Riverwalk, all right, all around the parks? All against the rules, right? Prasaga had his political sign up for 45 days on Eighth Avenue.
Thank you. Your time has expired. All right. Seeing no other in-person speakers, Mr. McNally, are there anyone online with their hands up? Mr. McNally, are there any virtual?
My apologies. Mayor Conserga, I have four individuals with their hands up and I'll unmute. The first one is Ace Tilton Ratcliffe.
All right. Thank you so much for all those virtual speakers. I will let you have 30 seconds so you can pace yourself. Please begin when you are ready.
Hi there, Ace Tilton Ratcliffe. I'm at PO Box 696, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33425. I just really want to echo the idea that this is a big enough issue that I absolutely think that it deserves workshop quality and not happening at 10 at night when the commissioners and all the rest of us are exhausted after a very long evening. And I'd also like to speak up and say that Commissioner Turkin, I really respect that you are doing so much hard work to stand up for your constituents and speak for them. I did find the way that you spoke to the woman who was giving the presentation tonight to be really rude. You interrupted her multiple times and it sounded like you weren't clear in the information that you asked for from her and then you punished her for not providing her something that you didn't specifically ask for. So I thought that that was really out of line. And while I commend you doing a good job standing up for your constituents, I don't think it's fair to beat up on the people who work for the city as they're just doing their jobs. So I do hope that this goes to a workshop and I really do hope that we talk about the environmental implications that's brought up by one of the first speakers. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please go ahead and unmute them. Mr. McNally.
Next speaker is Cortland McQuire.
All right, Cortland, begin when you're ready.
Hi, thank you very much, Commission Mayor. And I want to thank Commissioner Turkin for bringing this up. It was definitely a stump issue running for city commissioner. And I'm also serving on the planning and development board as well as the arts commission board. It was definitely an issue brought up, the number one issue for sure. So I mean, just loosely speaking, I think is the best way to deal with this issue is that I totally respect planning and development and they have the most difficult job within the city, aside from perhaps city manager and mayor, but it is a very complex issue, but height restrictions, density, concrete canyons is a concern because we don't really want to become Boca or Fort Lauderdale and we don't want to quite be Delray. We want to be somewhere in between, maybe, you know? That's my theory. And I think a workshop, I agree with Ace and others that it's a very good idea and should be done. And you shouldn't go it alone. If you look at Riverwalk, it really is a misguided project. And I will say that on planning development, I cannot believe that the density and weight of that parcel was approved. I mean, it's significantly going to affect sewage and electricity traffic. I mean, it's ridiculous. And that really isn't technically in the downtown corridor. And I listened to the previous presentation and was a little bit confused as to what's downtown. And I'm on planning and development. So I think that a little bit of discovery, information, workshop, totally for it. I think the direction of Boynton is not Boca. It's not Delray, it's Boynton. And so I want to commend Commissioner Turkin for bringing it to the table and tie for for going for it and high rises are a tricky proposition. Yeah, they bring in tax revenue. But yeah, they bring in problems. So it's a balance. So thank you for your time and goodbye.
Thank you. And next speaker.
The next speaker is Gregory Hartman. You have been unmuted. You are currently self-muted. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I wanted to speak in favor of the height limit. I believe the city may have one on the books already and this would actually increase it from if memory serves me correct. I think having the smaller buildings is right for our city character. When we think about the history of our city, we think of the character of our city. No one thinks of a high rise. When I see the old photos of Boynton Beach, when they're, you know, federal highway wasn't a highway, it was really just a road. Military trail wasn't a thing. Congress wasn't even a thing. And you see the character of the buildings and we think of the history of our city and we think of the long-term vision of the city. It shouldn't be a lot of very tall buildings scattered around a bunch of smaller historic buildings. I think our city has a small town South Florida charm. And putting the height limit, I don't think will affect our economic activity too much. When you look at Delray Beach, they're one of the most successful cities around. And I'm not saying to copy their playbook exactly, but it hasn't seemed to have negatively impacted them. And it's also helped them kept part of the charm of their city and part of why people visit Delray is a historical charm and the buildings still fit the character of the neighborhoods, even though it's been 100 years later. I think it would be wise for the city to adapt the height, height limit. I think if a workshop's needed, it is what it is, but I think time is of the essence. Our city is rapidly changing. Will there be a skyline when you're waiting on the bridge at 95 on Boynton Beach or Wilbright and you look east and you see it where it looks like you're in Miami and you see a wall of condos? I don't think anyone wants to see that. And having a reasonable height limit in place would help keep our character of our city and I think keep residents happy. It would also bring tourists in because people want to see unique areas. They don't want to see buildings that could be anywhere from, you know, here to Jacksonville. They want to see buildings that are within character. And I think having that height limit would be one of the great step in doing that. And I appreciate the commission's time for listening and being here so late tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. McNally.
Mayor Conserga, the final one is Vanessa Belmonte.
All right, please begin when you are ready. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock.
Hi there, Vanessa Belmonte, 100 Northeast Sixth Street. I definitely am for the height restriction and I'm just want to commend, excuse me, commend Thomas Turkin and the rest of the commissioners who and the mayor for moving forward with more research to add to some of the items that should be addressed and brought up in the workshop and future presentations. Should be flooding and sewage, pedestrian accessibility, schools, environmental impact, parks and traffic. So that's what we want to see on that presentation. We want to see information and data. And like the mayor said, the pros and cons. I think it was a really just kind of lackluster a presentation. And I think that there's so much more that can be elaborated on with with the impact of our city. And I'm just really happy to hear everyone who's come up and talked about the impacts of Riverwalk and beyond and the environmental impacts and and the birds, you know, Florida is known for for their coastline and for our beautiful oceans. And what are we doing for, what are we doing but developing? And like I said in the last meeting, we're pimping out our town, we're pimping out our our beautiful land and our coastlines. And that's not what we want to see. So I'd also like to request that the public be invited to not only attend the workshop, but add public comment in the workshop because a lot of the CRA meetings, the public cannot comment. So I think we should just re-approach and have a new mindset when it comes to involving the public more on these decisions. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. McNally, just want to confirm, was that the last digital hand up?
That is correct, Mayor Conserga.
All right. Thank you so much. Public comment is now closed. Commissioners, we have discussed this item. We are in agreement that we need more information before we can proceed. There was discussion of possibly setting up a workshop. Is that something we want to set right now?
Yes, please.
I think that'd be a good idea.
All right. But in order for us to do that, I would need to hear from staff. What is a reasonable or a sufficient period of time by which you can gather all the necessary information we requested? Yes, Commissioner.
I got a note here from David Katz and he had his hand over, hand up and he was passed over.
I've asked if there was anyone else. Mr. McNally, can you please confirm that, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
At the time, I did not see David Katz hand raised. I can unmute him now if you would like.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm hoping that you give me maybe a minute or two more. David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. As a former commissioner and I served on the P and D board for seven years, five as chair, I think I have maybe a little bit more insight than some of the folks who have spoken. I'm going to talk a little bit about Riverwalk. It was known as would be called in development as the highest and best use for that property, but the issue was that they were given a height exception. And that's the issue I'm going to talk about is that on an ongoing basis, previous commissions have given projects height exceptions. If you have a 45 foot height limit and you give a height exception because of an elevator shaft or hiding air conditioning units and you allow it to go another 10 feet or nine feet, well, then maybe what needs to be baked into an ordinance is that if you're going to want to hide your those those features, then maybe you need to build three stories and put the fourth story is hiding it and don't allow for height exceptions. And that's the real issue here. And to possibly attempt to deep dive into possibly changing existing zoning might send the city into various litigations because you can't, you can't take a zoning and downzone it and have the property owner not sue you in court. So that's got to be something you got to sort of proceed with, with, with an abundance of caution. But the way to way to look at this height exception is not to grant them anymore. Don't grant any more height exceptions. Riverwalk was not supposed to be 10 stories. If it had kept its original height, they may not have done the project. But they came to the commission at the time and said, well, if you don't give us the height exception, we can't do it. And the commission thought, well, we're going to lose this project. We're going to lose the tax dollars, whatever. So what the commission has to do is stand fast on not granting height exceptions. But don't go back on the zonings that exist because that's going to cause litigation. And I do appreciate you're getting me back on the the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Staff, you were, you were about to be in the podium. Could you give us a timeline of when you think you'd have all this information ready for a workshop? I'm sorry, one second. Go ahead.
Yes, being that that this is a very loaded conversation, I would like to request about five to six weeks to prepare and make sure we are getting you not only information from the jurisdictions, but pros and cons and some options.
Okay. Any comment from anyone else, city manager or any other members of the commission?
You said five to six weeks? And what was, what was the date from when I proposed this to now?
I would have to check, but I believe it's four weeks.
Four weeks? Can we do it in four weeks? Or is that pushing it? I'd rather, I'd rather wait longer and get a better presentation. So if you think five weeks is it, five weeks, let's go.
I would rather do five to six weeks and get you all the information you wanted than do it in four weeks and be missing some of the information.
And this would be for for the workshop, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It works for me.
All right. Thank you so much. Five to six weeks it is from today. And could we take a look at the calendar of what our options are? So it's
While we're at it, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, of course. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
My, my last thought is, can we include within the research potential timeframe? It's possible this happens, it's possible that it doesn't happen, but if it were to happen, can we include in the research timeframe on how long that would be? That was my last thought.
I'm sorry, timeframe for the changes to take place, like if we were changing certain options. Okay, sure.
My recommendation would be if members of the commission have more specific questions that you meet with Ms. Radigan one-on-one and have them be aware of those requests so they can be prepared properly.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you so much. Five to six weeks from now, what does that bring us to? One, two.
Week of June 20th.
Correct, week of June 20th.
And are we able to get the public involved with this? Is that something we can do?
Yes, there will be public comment in in workshops. I'm comfortable with another Saturday. I know we've had workshops on Saturday to accommodate everyone's work schedule. I think that's also good for the public. So people are not working and they're able to attend and participate. That would us, that would bring us to the 25th. I would be okay with that. I have nothing else scheduled on my calendar for that day. Does anybody have any major conflicts for the 25th of June?
25th is perfect.
Okay. And in terms of a time, is it? How does the commission feel about 10 o'clock?
Yeah, I think 10 a.m. is good.
Okay. Too early?
Let's not do 9 a.m. again.
All right. Any other further questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to set a special city commission workshop on June 25th, starting at 10 a.m. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Staff, thank you for your time. And now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 11B, Commission Discussion Regarding Acreage of Open Space Required Based on Population as requested by Commissioner Turkin. Commissioner, thank you for bringing this item up. I'd like to better understand the intent of this item if you would like to speak to that.
Yes, so I guess it's where, this is a question for staff. So my understanding is that we have an ordinance that requires a certain amount of green space per thousand people. I think I could be misspeaking. But I just wanted to get an idea of what that is and what the, again, what the comparisons are to other municipalities like I have requested.
Go ahead, Ms. Radigan.
I'm Ms. Radigan, Planning and Zoning Director. I can share with you what the standards are currently. I've done some preliminary research on some neighboring municipalities, so we could bring that forward in a more formal fashion at a later date also. So currently, the the acreage required per 1,000 residences within our comprehensive plan, within the parks and recreation. I'm sorry, recreation and open space element. It requires 2.5 acres of developed park land per 1,000 residents. So this calculation excludes undeveloped parks. It excludes things like conservation and preservation lands. It excludes everything else except developed parks. That has been within the comp plan since 1989. We have other requirements I could share a little bit about about now that has to do with open space and usable open space requirements. These are requirements of the developer. Very different from level of service, which is a standard of service for the city to provide to its residents.
Okay, so it's 2.5 acres per 1,000 people of developed parkland. What is the definition of developed parkland? Is that just city parks or?
It is currently within the calculation city parks. LOS is really all about your methodology. The comprehensive plan can set what you include and what you exclude from this methodology. Currently, what's being calculated is city-owned developed parks. So things like Calusa, which is, and I, we do have our Parks and Rec director here. I'm not I'm not the best versed in this subject, but Calusa is owned by the county and is not included in our LOS standard. And that park is 64 approximately acres. And that park is sixty-four approximately acres.
Okay. And what is the, um, did, and you, did you say if you had examples of other municipalities?
Yeah, so again, LOS is all about methodology. Um, I remember in some previous conversations, we talked a little bit about Delray, we talked a little bit about Boca. Um, Delray actually, in their current comprehensive plan, does not have an LOS. Um, their standards say that they will be reviewing innovative options for a different standard to measure the quality of park space versus just a number of acreage. Um, Boca does have an LOS of ten. However, their methodology includes things like golf courses, um, conservation land, um, water bodies possibly. It's a very different method for getting to that ten acres, um, versus ours, which is, has a very strict definition.
Okay. So what Boca is using as far as calculation is different? Is that what you're saying? Just so I understand?
Yes, they include a different acreage. So they're including, um, for example, developed parks, undeveloped parks, conservation land, golf courses, all of things which are excluded from our level of service standard.
And, and our calculation is just developed city-owned parks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and then, and I, and this, this will take some time, I'm sure, but is there a way to find out, you know? Is there a way to kind of compare where we're at with, with Boca if we considered how they formulate? And I'm not saying, you know, copy them, but I just want to know, are we under, are we, uh, you know, because we all talk about environmental impact, right? You know, the mayor brought up solar panels for the Publix project. I want to make sure that we're doing our job, you know, compared to other cities. Because if, if, if I see ten acres per thousand people, I mean, that's a significant difference from what we're doing here in Boynton.
Sure, what we could do is bring back, um, a comparison of Boynton's acreage, and perform the methodology in Boynton similar to how Boca does it. So we can run acreage numbers for our conservation land, our water land, our, um, our, our golf course, um, our undeveloped park, and we could look at a comparison that's more, um, apples to apples, let's say, uh, between LOS.
Yep. Awesome. That would be great. Thank you so much for, uh, clarifying that for me. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not, we're not, you know, performing less, you know, when it comes to considering the environment and the animals and, you know, because you hear two point five, you hear ten, it's a little bit alarming. So thank you for clarifying, you know, how that, that is calculated.
Sure, my pleasure.
I'd like to hear comments and questions from members of the commission. Uh, see Vice Mayor Cruz, go ahead.
Um, just to clarify and just to make sure I understand correctly, um, when there's a development project, there's a possibility of paying a fee and not, you know, if there's a requirement for specific land to be green space per se, and then they, they can choose to pay the fee instead. There's no, there's no way to go around that, right? Like it's either or.
So that is actually a completely different set of regulations. Um, that is housed under our park impact fee. So like I said before, LOS is about our standard to our residents. Um, the usable open space requirement or developments requirements are housed in our zoning regulations and have more to do, they have to pay their fair share of impact of their development to our city. So that can be done in a few ways. One is a park impact fee, which is a cash contribution into our Parks and Rec Fund. Um, there is also a land dedication of equal value to your park impact fee. Um, and I believe that there are one or two other options that I, I can bring those before you also, but it is different than the city's adopted level of service standard.
Any other questions or comments from my fellow commissioners?
I guess the question that comes to mind, that we're a city of eighty thousand plus, is it realistic to think that we're going to have eight thousand parks in Boynton? And where are you going to find the land to put that many? How many do we have now?
I, I believe in terms of acreage, um, again, without having the numbers in front of me, we are somewhere between two hundred and fifty acres to three hundred acres, depending what's included. Um, I did run some rough numbers for our current level of service. We are over our two point five. Um, just straight math on what's developed right now. And in addition, we do have like another forty-five acres of undeveloped park property, um, which is not counted towards that total yet.
Ms. Radigan, was the eco park already considered as part of that calculation?
It was.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else before we move on? Well, thank you for, yes, Commissioner Turkin?
Yep, I just wanted to see if the public had anything to say.
Um, is there anyone from the, who would like to speak on this item? Please approach the podium now. As always, you will have three minutes. I see one person, um, begin when you are ready.
Mike Fitzpatrick, one seventy-five Southwest Second Street. Originally, my understanding, or my memory is maybe a little different from, uh, staff's. Um, originally, it was six per, six acres per thousand. And, uh, it, it was originally set up because you were developing a lot of cow pastures, I believe. And so when you had a cow pasture developed, you had enough land, it was forty or within fifty or acres or better that you could, uh, set aside easily, uh, six acres per thousand residents, like, uh, Leisureville was set up that way. And, um, the reason it went to three or two and a half, I remember it was three, but because there was Motorola, and that was forty-nine acres of former cow pasture, and then payers came in, were, went away and cell phones, so they, uh, the city commission wanted to turn it into a mixed use. And, uh, the reason there aren't any, where Commissioner Cruz lives, there aren't any parks there. And the reason is, is because the mayor Gerald, Gerald Broning wanted to maximize the profit for the developer. And so the way to do that was drop the six acres per thousand to three per acres. And then suddenly, you doubled the amount of acreage you had to count with, so there was plenty of room already on the books at three acres per thousand that you didn't have to add any more parks in Renaissance Commons. So that's the reason I, and, but the main head person, if you want more information on that, I would suggest talk to Mike Rumpf, because he was the point person to, to make that change is, that's my memory when I was on the P and D board. Um, now point was made, what are we going to do going forward? If you're going to require six acres or three acres for, for these new residents and you're, uh, giving out stuff for forty acre, I mean, forty units per acre, how can you do that? Because if you had a thousand people, that would be about ten acres and six of it or three of it, whatever, would be green and, and that's all valuable land. Well, over the weekend, I was reading snippets of about ten comprehensive plans. And I remember one thing, it said, they didn't have to be on site. They, there was one city that had it, had to be a ten-minute walk, which is three miles an hour. That's basically a half a mile. So if you had a high-valued land and you needed green space, uh, it seems to me just throwing it out there as an idea that in that area for that half mile, it doesn't have to be right on their site, but they could find some cheaper land and buy up the appropriate acreage to, uh, accommodate the people that they are adding to the city. And then if they went beyond the half-mile limit to like between half mile and a mile, then you could add a surcharge of twenty-five acres or twenty-five percent and so on. Just throwing that out for future. This might need another workshop.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Please approach the podium now. Seeing none. We're going to move on to virtual speakers. Sir McNally, is there anybody online who would like to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor Penzler, I have two individuals. One of them, the hand is not showing, and it's Mr. David Katz again. But the first one to raise was, uh, Ms. Vanessa Belmonte, so I'll unmute her microphone first.
Please begin when you are ready. As before, I will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining on the clock.
Hi, Vanessa Belmonte, one hundred Northeast Sixth Street. Um, I just wanted to know if included in that last statistic that, um, she provided were the, if the new condos that are being put up here in, on Ocean Avenue, if those are being included. So it's the Broadstone Development, and then I'm pretty sure, um, right here on the corner of US One and Ocean, between Ocean and Boynton Beach Boulevard, that's going to be developed very soon as well. Um, so I just was curious if those numbers were also included in the current acreage. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next speaker.
That is, uh, David Katz.
Good evening one more time. Uh, I don't understand the glitch because I, uh, my hand is raised and it's green and somehow it's not coming across to you guys, so maybe it's something you need to look into. Um, every time there was a budget hearing, when Commissioner, because former Commissioner Cello was on the commission, I asked to have the close to four acres that's in the meadows, which is dedicated parkland since the early nineties to be developed into a passive park, never was the money allocated. And that's, what are we talking about? Going back almost thirty years. And there's a similar size piece land on the other side of the tree line, uh, in, in Nautica, which is the same thing. And, and, and I don't know how they take care, but I know the city pays to mow what we have here in the meadows. Um, once, uh, Mr. Penzler became the commissioner for District Four, I did try to reach out to him, but he, he never answered the phone and never returned my phone calls about this issue, uh, which I hope would not be the case any longer with the new commissioner. Uh, I'll be more than happy to give her a shout about it. Again, I don't know, I guess based on the criteria, this, these acre, this acreage is not included in the, in the calculation, but I think it'd be about time that it would be included in the calculation. And we're not asking for basketball courts. There's already a park like that. We're asking for it to be a, literally a passive park with paths, benches and shade trees so that people can walk or walk their dogs or whatever. And, um, and you could get people from Mounts Botanical Garden to come in and plant, need of, uh, ground cover, and you wouldn't even have to water it. So I hope maybe at the next budget meeting, maybe you guys could look into, uh, you know, budgeting a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get this piece of parkland onto the, uh, the, uh, the calculation. And so we can have that here in the meadows. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNally, any other speakers? Or was it the last one?
Mayor Penzler, that was the last one.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item, eleven C, Commission Discussion Regarding Changing the Start Time for City Commission Meetings to six PM requested by Commissioner Turkin. Commissioner Turkin, this was your item?
Yeah, there's a theme here. Um, so, you know, I, I don't mind them at five thirty. I think my intention was more for people getting off of work. They don't have to rush and get over here. Um, so my opinion is, you know, is solely, you know, try to help our constituents. Um, but again, I want to make sure we, you know, do what's best for everybody and, and, you know, and the residents, so, um, I just want to hear from you guys on what you think about that.
All right, let's begin with members of the commission. Commissioner Hay, would you like to begin?
I don't have a problem with, uh, the six PM. We used to, uh, meet at six thirty before it was five thirty. So to go to six is a happy medium. I would like to say to the interim, uh, city manager, to see if we can do something about restructuring this, uh, agendas kind of long, takes forever. Um, maybe we can do things a little different. Uh, so, uh, but I have no problem, uh, with the six o'clock. So that's, that's my position.
Vice Mayor.
Same. I don't necessarily have an issue with it. My only concern would be staff. I know they work really hard and, you know, starting half an hour later means ending half an hour later and going home later. So that's my only thought.
I hope not.
Uh, Commissioner Kelly.
I also, I mean, I, I would, um, kind of go with what the majority feels. I think that, um, the public, you know, I can make a time work that works for the majority. Um, I, I want, you know, I, I have enjoyed seeing the public come to the meetings, and if it means that we continue to have the public attend, then I'm, I'm fine with making it a little bit later. I think, um, I think it does help with people. Um, I know that I run into an issue with the five o'clock start time for first Friday concerts that I'm not even leaving my office at five o'clock. So, um, so a later start time definitely, I think, would help most, you know, working people with coming here, making a, a more of an effort to come.
All right, so I, I, I'm going to have to agree, uh, with what, uh, Commissioner Hay has said. It is a happy medium. Before it was, uh, six thirty, then five thirty, now we're back at six for the proposal. But I do want, just want to state my concern here is, I don't think it's good government to be making, uh, decisions ten, eleven, twelve, one, two in the morning. Uh, that is not the way to do business. Uh, it's not good for the public, and if the intention is to start later to allow for more public to participate, well, the natural tendency is that as we start later, we do business later, uh, and that's actually prohibitive uh, for the members of the public to participate because it's so late and they have to work. And, and quite frankly, we also come from work, so, um, and it's not good for us to operate that way. I can tell you that, uh, around this time, ten thirty, eleven, that's when it gets a little fuzzy for me because I've been working all day. Um, but, you know, so I think six is a happy medium. I would just, uh, say to my colleagues that I could not support anything uh, later than that. And as part of my support for the six PM, that we continue to have a conversation about how we can make these meetings more efficient. Uh, again, it's just not good to do business, uh, late into the evening, and it's also not good for public participation. As you can see in the room, most people have gone home. They've got families, they've got lives, they've got work to do. So, um, having said that, we've all spoken. I'd like to open the floor to, uh, public comment. If there's anybody who would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium now. And as always, three minutes per person.
This is going to be pretty quick. Kristy Ward, um, I do agree with the six o'clock. Um, yes, this does go a little bit too long. Um, I have, I don't know, I feel like my, my brain gets sundowners. I just go down. I can't even form a sentence. But I do believe, like, with that being said, like, if you make little adjustments here and there, even to the meeting, to like, get like a cutoff time, because after a while, everything just starts to get like jibber jabber, and you can't really think, and people are tired. And if you're doing it all day, that's just too much. I don't know how you can do it, but if you have like, okay, we're going to stop at nine thirty, that would be good because then that's like a good time. Go home, maybe get some sleep because I'm tired. Um, let's go.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from, from the public? Seeing none in the room, let's go to virtual speakers. Mr. McNally, is there anybody online?
I am unmuting Mr. David Katz.
All right. Please begin when you are ready, sir.
I apologize because I made my hand red. It, the screen popped up with, with the, with the hand green and I turned it red. So I don't have a comment and I apologize. This, this seems to be the glitch that we need to correct, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Um, yes, Commissioner Hay.
Uh, what do we consider, uh, making an assignment to our interim city manager? Who's, uh, doing my talks is, he's kind of good with, good with these things, is to look at this agenda. See how we can, um, let's, let's say, what's the word for it? Yeah.
Consolidate.
Streamline, streamline this, uh, agenda and bring it to us and, and we can, we can talk about it, look at it or something. What, what do you feel about that?
Yeah, uh, since I've sat here, uh, that's one of the conversations I've had with staff from the time I walked in. Um, we're, we're working on some of those things. Uh, what we don't want to do is drastic change so quickly. There may be some incremental course corrections. There may be limitations of presentations, proclamations, those types of things on the front end, because there's a lot of time spent there. The other thing is limiting business. So you're not dealing with, you know, five major projects in a public hearing setting. So, uh, the answer is absolutely, we can look at that as staff and, and come back with some recommendations on how we conduct the business meeting and, and maybe consider, uh, a time certain to end, so we So we build the meeting around that and and recognize that, you know, we're gonna build that in. The only the only wild card for us is obviously public comment time. So uh, and we don't certainly want to suppress that. So keeping keeping that in mind, uh, you know, we can, we can certainly build something uh for your review and consideration and direction.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I I I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's fine. Um, I was just thinking, you know, for the most part, we tend to do proclamations, announcements and that sort of thing between five thirty and six. So if we move it to six, then the meeting really is gonna start around, depending on the agenda, of course, potentially six thirty. So just wanted to voice that, but I'm fine either way.
All right, Commissioner Turkin, you're about to say something?
Yeah, I I just want to piggyback with what um Commissioner Hay said. I had a similar conversation with Chief Stables. Uh, I think it's a, I think, yes, we should uh assign him. I don't know if we gotta make a motion um or what have you to look on how to do this more efficiently. And again, you know, if we can do it more efficiently, maybe we don't need to change the time. I don't, you know, I don't know. My concern is just, again, making sure that people can get here and have time after work and not feel rushed. But yes, I would like, I I'd like to look into how we can streamline this.
I believe there's consensus from the board to the city manager for streamlining the agenda. So thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the commission? All right, having uh. Having covered all of that, I'll take a motion to uh set our start time of our city meetings to six P M.
So move.
Wait, why aren't we getting research? How we could streamline?
In addition to, or did you all want to wait after that?
I think I understood that he was looking into it to figure out if we need to change the times or not.
When I was looking at, I was looking at it as two separate items.
Oh, you saw it as.
We we do want.
Simultaneously.
To to change the time to six P M because of the public, because of, you know, of the reasons that we've already stated. But the other, okay, is a separate item to see how we can get all of our work done within that timeframe. Even though we've lost a half an hour. So I look at it as two separate.
Two separate items. All right, so I'll repeat them. I have a motion to uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One second. If we can make this date specific when it begins, so we're we're aware whether we start on June seventh or June twenty-first, that'll help.
Yes.
In the process. So if you can include that in your motion, that will be helpful for staff to understand.
Yes.
I think June seventh should be, that's that way gives us a couple of weeks, correct? Three weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt, but there's nothing noticed already for June seventh at six thirty. I'm sorry, five thirty. If there's not, if that's not the case, June seventh, they'll be fine.
Is that correct, staff? There is no other notice for that yet?
Crystal Gibson, City Clerk, I don't believe that there is a um a notice out there for June seven, June.
So let us set the June seventh meeting at six P M. Have that motion.
Mayor.
One, sorry.
That's a lot more discussion today than I expected.
Another point, was that the last time that the meeting time was changed, it included the CRA meetings as well? And I didn't know if you wanted to do that at the same time again, or.
Probably should do that at the CRA board.
Yes, I concur.
With counsel.
Right.
It should be done separately from the CRA board.
But let me just ask legal caution.
Yes.
For is uh notifying the public about this, changing the the time from five thirty to six. Is there a lead way that we need to consider, like two weeks or something?
Now, we've got actually an extra Tuesday in May, so we've got three weeks to implement this. So I was just being cautious with my question about noticing because usually you're two weeks apart. As if you adopt a motion tonight, we just work with City Clerk's office and manage and get it right up on the website, post whatever we need to post and make any publications that would be required. Should have enough time to do that before June the seventh.
Okay, thank you.
And also push it out on social media while in advance of the meeting so that they're away and the ways that we market meetings. Other options from social media, but social media is one of them.
Any final comments? Let's have that motion to set the June seventh meeting to six P M.
So move.
Is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. The June seventh meeting is set for six P M. And effective starting that meeting. Moving on to item six, uh eleven D, Commission Discussion Regarding Adding a Dog Park in District Three requested by Commissioner Turkin.
Um, yeah, I think staff was gonna propose some options.
Good evening, Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. Just to provide on this item, uh, just a list of uh parks that are included in District Three. Uh, those parks include Betty Thomas Park, uh, the Boynton Beach Memorial Park, which is a cemetery, Centennial Park and Amphitheater, Dewey Park. Ed Harmonian Arbor Park, Forest Hills Park, undeveloped park is Girl's Car Park, Hibiscus, J C Park, K-Poc Park, Little Leap Park. May uh, no longer mangrove and Pence Park. Those are all the parks listed for District Three.
Commissioner Turkin?
So is there any um, is there any possibility in converting or potentially adding like a fencing area for people? You know, so we have that dog park, right? Because I know we have one over on the west side of ninety-five where they have that new um development. Vice Mayor, it's in your district. I forget the name. It's not that big. You know, we have five hundred ocean. We have one Boyton. You know, spoken with many of those residents and they don't really have anywhere to take their dog. Except for that setback green space they have from like Wilbright, for example. But what I see, you know, being in the animal health industry and having seen animals hit by cars all the time, it's it's set, you know? And I don't think that we should have people walking their dogs up along the street. You know, I think we have the ability to try to provide something, not just for the, you know, our residents, but also for the animals, you know? And so I don't know if there's a possibility, you know, with finding something that we could convert to provide for the community. You know, we have Riverwalk coming also. We have Broadstone coming. Um, you know, there's another CRA project as well. So, you know, we're we're bringing in probably over a thousand people, you know, just the District Three. And so I think it would be nice to provide, uh, you know, a dog park, obviously like God has got a giant one. I don't think we're gonna have anywhere for that. Um, I know uh you had mentioned um J C Park was a dog friendly park. So I don't know if that was an an option or, you know, what? I I guess the next steps is like what, what, what can we look at? What are our options, you know, as far as space? It's gonna take some space.
Well, I did just want to mention uh to the commission that uh we do have where we designate as dark friendly parks. And those parks in District Three in include Dewey Park and also J C Park. Where uh our definition of a dog friendly park is that you're allowed to bring a dog a dog into the park, but it has to remain leased while in the park.
Um, Mr. Young, let me ask you this question. What would it take? And perhaps this question is for any staff member. What would it take to convert from a dog friendly park to an official dog park? Would it just be fencing and a water station and some poop stations and what would it take to convert that?
Well, uh, the a dark part currently is Joseph Carter Park. And again, it is fenced in. Uh, there are some amenities there uh that are catered catered towards, you know, dogs and and play for those uh for the animals. Yes, it would take some design. Obviously, we would have to look into it and research it, make sure that we design it correctly. But uh fencing to keep the dogs enclosed in the area um would be part of that proposal.
I would be interested in seeing what staff could bring together about uh converting one of our existing parks in District Three. Uh, into a from a dog friendly to an actual dog park. Uh, just from my experience at the Joe Crowder Dog Park behind Target there in District uh one. You know, there is a large dog section and a small dog section. I see some uh some toys, not toys, but um.
Play features.
Play features. Um, I I don't know how much that cost and and what kind of ballpark numbers uh that would bring us to.
So what I'd like to recommend is we're, right now, we're undergoing our park Parks Master Plan. Initiative, which is evaluating all of the park services throughout the city. So I understand the timing may not be as quickly as you'd like because the the Parks Master Plan, I think, is we're about ten months out from completing at this point. But I would like to include that in the Parks Master Plan and maybe we can talk to the consultant about, you know, doing some preliminary analysis of where. Dog parks would be more more feasible on the front end so that maybe we get that deliverable prior to completion of the entire Parks Master Plan. But I really would like to be put it as part of that initiative because that's looking at all of the parks comprehensively across the city. And looking at our level of service and the different things. So I'm just, I would like to look at it holistically if if you would allow us the time to do that.
And that would be ten items. So Commissioner?
And that would be ten months?
The the Parks Master Plan project is underway, but we're looking at about ten months to have it completed. But we can talk to the consultant about maybe analyzing what parks would be feasible. And maybe get that deliverable done prior to completion of the entire Parks Master Plan. We can talk to them about that.
Right. So what you're saying is we could potentially look into this because I think um Mayor Pennsler made a great point. You know, converting, and thank you for articulating that much better, converting the dog friendly park to a dog park. And and, you know, Mayor said it perfectly. It's important to have, you know, that separation between the small dogs and the large dogs, very, very important. And and play features, water, all that. Is it possible to look into this um and then roll that into the master plan as we go?
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't want you to feel like that we're, you know, trying to stall on this at all. I just want to look at our parks comprehensively and together. Um, but we can certainly look at evaluating that component of it earlier on in the project, in the project of the Parks Comprehens, of the Parks Master Plan. Um, and I think Andrew can speak to just converting a park and what that would look like.
Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager, Public Services. Just wanted to go through a little bit of uh some of the lessons learned that we learned at the Joseph Crowder Park. I know initially, I don't know if you all know that we started out with just two areas, one small, one big dog. And what we found was the grass, the the it takes a lot of um, I would say, not beating, but uh it gets used a lot. So it gets torn up a lot. Dogs are, you know, they're enjoying themselves, which is what we want. So um, there's some things there that we had to build an additional side so that we could rotate the section to allow the grass to come back and grow. If you're not doing that, then we would need to look at different options, you know, maybe some synthetic turf, which is not primarily friendly that we want to do. But, you know, those are things that we would need to evaluate to look at. So we're keeping our maintenance costs down because a dog park is pretty costly to maintain, especially when you know, have them as large as like a Lake Ida. Where you have enough room for them to run around and do the things that they want to do. So these are all the things that we'll need to look at, and I do think it's a great idea to put it, to establish another dog park in the city. Um, especially in the downtown, like which you all are talking about doing. So um, I think it's something that's a great idea, using the dog, the master plan process to evaluate, to kind of give us some targeted locations that we can look at strategically. My staff can do some pretty uh schematic drawings or something like that to give us some ballparks as well. And uh, the other thing we could look at is maybe opening up some other dog um parks to be dog friendly as well. Uh, they may not give you off leash that you're looking for, but it does give you another opportunity to walk the dog, to be able to make uh, to take care of business.
Yep, that would that would be um, that would be great. Thank you, Andrew.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Mack and Ms. Matos. Uh, go ahead, Vice Mayor Chris.
Your point, Andrew, great point, because I've had a lot of constituents in District One say, I don't feel comfortable with my dog going into the dog park. You know, and I also probably wouldn't feel comfortable with my dog running into other dogs without leash. So I think it's great, um, a great idea and dog friendly is a good balance. Do you have more? Thank you.
Anything else on this item? Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item eleven E, Proposed Resolution Number R twenty-two dash zero seven two. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, Mike Serrano, Deputy City Attorney, um, here this evening for you to consider the employment agreement for interim city manager Jim Stables. Um, on April twenty-sixth, the city commission unanimously appointed him as interim city manager. This uh interim city manager agreement provides for all the um terms and circumstances of that appointment. And it's here for your review and consideration this evening.
Members of the commission, please let me know who would like to begin.
I'll chime in. Uh, Chief Chief Stables, are you um content with this agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You you feel this is fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else from members of the commission? All right, well, may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number R twenty-two dash zero seven two?
Resolution to approve Resul- uh, number R twenty-two dash seven two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All those in favor say aye. Yes. I'm one second. I'm so sorry. Um, I have to open the floor to public comment. So as always, if anybody would like to speak, please approach the podium. Now is the time to do it. I don't see anybody in person. Uh, Mr. McNally, is there anybody online?
Mayor Pennsler, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Moving on to Legal, twelve A, Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I will read the order's title, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, chapter three, article three, zoning districts and overlay zones, chapter three, article four, section five, nonconforming uses, and chapter four, article nine, section six, historic preservation requirements to promote, incentivize, and facilitate preservation of historically designated properties in the city. Provided for complex severability, codification, and an effective date.
Sir Ralph? Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening to you all. Um, I'd like to say that this could be very brief and I'd give you a quick overview. Except late in this process, we realized a little bit of a glitch in one of your exhibits. It was entered into Novus as a work document. It had track changes shown on it and it made adjustments to it. So what I need to do at least is to go through, some of the things are not visible. In other words, some text has been added, but it's not underlined, so it's not clearly noticeable by you, as well as some text has been omitted. And it's not shown across town. But if the slideshow could be placed up for me, John. I give a quick overview, summary of the changes, and then point out some of the uh missing notations and what should have been shown up by track changes. And while he's doing that, I won't waste time. Um, Historic Preservation Board is, although they are probably not one of the busiest and most visible boards. They recently have been reinvigorate, reinvigorated in their in their role and their purpose here in the city. Partially due to recognizing a lot of demolitions that have occurred over the past many years since the program has been put in place uh in two thousand and twelve. Also, recent inquiries from new owners or just new owners who have interest in improving their properties that are on the registry or not registered. And would like to take advantage of some of the benefits of being on the registry. And coincidentally, one of those happens to be um surrounded by a potential assembly and the redevelopment project in downtown. And they're fearful of what impact that could have on them. So particularly demolition staff or the board was discussing that in one of our meetings and asked staff to look at the regulations to see what possible changes are warranted in our in our regulations and in the preservation ordinance itself. To remove perhaps impediments, to add incentives, to designate and restoring and maintaining historic properties. There still isn't a presentation. John?
I apologize. Mention that again?
The slideshow for our historic code amendment item.
Okay. Let me look that up. Let me look that up.
Again, let me keep moving and not take the time. Pointing out some of the milestones, and some of this is background information on the board, which some of your newest members here had, did not get to hear at one of the prior meetings, unless you're present. But I want to point out, nineteen ninety-six, historic site survey was done. That was an original inventory of all the historic properties in the city, namely those for over fifty years of age at that point in time. That starts a program really with, with a historic base of the properties in the city. And let me jump to, important fact is, there's only been, since the program was established in two thousand and twelve, three single family homes have been placed on local registry. Out of over a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty that were on that original registry. The board would like to get the word out, like to improve its, our promotions of the program in connection with promoting designations and preservation of structures here in the city. The first local registry addition was in two thousand and twelve, shortly after the establishment of the program. Program overview. One of the, one of the responsibilities of the board is adding properties to the local registry. Most notably, of course, we have the high school, that is one of our latest achievements in historic preservation of the city, that is on the local registry. As well as some monuments, and some of the national registered properties are also on the local registry. Program benefits. One of the bullets is, you want to jump forward, John? Program benefits, I think it's the next slide. I want to just go right to exemption from codes and current impending standards. On the books has been a recommendation of staff to support variances that may be warranted to promote historic preservation. That's a separate process, and that doesn't have separate criteria, and that would require staff to review such a variance, which could be setbacks, which could be lot coverage, something to do with the expansion perhaps of a historic home. The, the meat of these amendments are really to do, go farther than just promote variances, it's to exempt them from certain lot standards and zoning regulations. Getting right to the proposed amendments, next slide. Summarizing them by four bullets. Provide exemptions from and reductions or reduction in lot and billing standards. Address conflict with the redevelopment plan initiative. Establish exceptions for nonconforming uses. And increase applicability of demolition review to something we would then call approved priority sites. And moving forward, next slide. Proposed amendments, I'll, I'll hone in on the middle three bullets that are recessed. It would exempt, now this is a designated home, this is not anything that's eligible for review, this is designated properties on the local registry. Exempt from minimum lot area, frontage, and lot, living area, a ten percent increase in maximum lot coverage, and legal nonconforming setbacks establishes them as basically the base setback, not to be worsened. This does not bypass drainage requirements if they were to exceed the maximum lot coverage. It would offer a simpler and quicker alternative to the variance process if relief is requested. An immediate application of the amendments to take effect and benefit property owners who have historic properties. Right now, there is in the process, and going to the board at our next meeting, our next designation consideration, which is a nineteen twenty-five or four, nineteen twenty-four mission style home at three thirty Northwest First Avenue. Relatively new owner to the property has purchased roughly eight hundred square foot home, and his family's already grown. He'd like to expand the property, is waiting for the outcome of these regulations to see if he has space in his lot with increased lot coverage and decreased setbacks to make his expansion possible. So it's nice to report something like that, so actually having immediate benefits, something like this, and see how it could be applied. Moving out to the next slide, John? A simple scenario, we, we, which we've experienced as I was reviewing the regulations is, is the land assembly is surrounding a potentially designatable property. The way the redevelopment regulations read right now is to use that mixed use district, that's the subject of this scenario. You have to have a complete block. You cannot be interrupted mid-block by something that would interrupt the design of the project. The historic home would represent such an interference of continuation of the mixed use development. Now, so what we have here is competing objectives to promote redevelopment, promote historic preservation. But it's not a win-win circumstance. So the proposed changes in the regulations would allow that exception to that mixed use project, and it would be built around it. And there's recommendations in here as to how to do that. Design standards or guidelines that would be used to promote that compatible interface along the street. Lastly, last summer, before I go through some of the tech changes themselves, proposed amendments to demolition review process. So right now, again, if a designated property is subject to a demolition request, it goes through, it goes through a little more thorough process. It halts the demolition temporarily, so that historic asset can be considered for preservation. For partial preservation, if there's elements of the home that are worthy of saving, and the property owner is willing, as well as providing the city with the replacement plans for the property. Again, that's only a designated property. And what, what the board and staff had talked about was possibly expanding that to not all the eligible properties in accordance with the original inventory, which is over a hundred and some properties, but create a, let's say, let's call it an A-list. It is those that were not designated, but high candidates due to their quality and age, that would be considered, that would be treated the same way. We could call that the A-list, we call it potentially, you'll see in the text, potentially designated properties or potentially valuable properties. That's going to take a little more extra work, a little more complex, since the board would have to come up with this next set of properties that warrant that type of attention. If demolition were promoted by a property owner. But also, it also could support some of their initiatives. An educational component would be part of this, in that they would identify the properties, they would come before the commission for approval, as well as there would be an education campaign to reach out to those. If there's ten of those properties, if there's fifteen of those properties, there'd be an educational campaign to educate the property owner on the value of historic preservation. All right, quickly moving on to Exhibit A is cleaned. That is this, and I can give you page numbers in your package if you need them. Jumping right to Exhibit B. This is where the Novus system made some alterations to track changes. And I can go through those really quickly with you. On page eight eighty-seven, if I move too quickly, if you have a question, please interrupt me. Eight eighty-seven, there is some omitted text, and that's in the, the paragraph after first paragraph four. So it's the second paragraph under subsection four. And there is an underlying text which reads, on a designated or inventoried site, after that, omitted would be the words affecting a historic property. That's omitted. I'm also pointing out on eight eighty-eight, most significantly is the fact that in your attachment, your exhibit on that page, it's not underlined. So everything under paragraph six, including the table extending over to page eight eighty-nine, is all new text and should be underlined. That's a new table, and that is representing the new setback standards that I just described in general terms. On that same page, nothing else. That's it. It's a very quick summary. I know we've been discussing the length of the meetings and the complexity of items that are late, and I, I can relate. I know my brain, brain can slow down when work starts very early. But if there's questions on that, please, I'll answer more detailed questions, and I'll wait for that rather than going.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. Are there any questions or comments from members of the commission? Now would be the time. Hearing none, I'd like to move on to public comment. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this item? Please approach the podium now. That was just a request to move the slide to slide nine. But again, I'm looking for anybody who would like to speak on this item. Please approach the podium now. Seeing none, Mr. McNally, is there anybody online?
Mayor Penzerga, nobody online has their hands raised at the moment.
Thank you. Public comments is now closed. At this point, I'd like to entertain, excuse me, I almost did it again. This is an ordinance, and as such, a roll call vote is required. Ms. Gibson, please begin the roll call vote.
Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Turkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me also interrupt real briefly, just indicated, will be cleaned up on second reading, which will be on, at the July seventh meeting. And I won't have to repeat, go through those itemized again. Thank you very much for your support.
You and seven.
You and seven, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Any final comments or questions from the commission before we adjourn? Hearing none, may have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.